Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statute noted this meeting was given on August 15th, 2014, the meeting will convene at 6:32 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard from, form staff to present to any, any presentation they may have at this meeting. In accordance with the policy, the request to be heard for must be submitted to the secretary Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska stat- pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statute, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held Wednesday, September 3rd, 2014 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room at the Teacher Administration Building, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the administrative building during working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statute, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Row. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Fay.
Here.
Gotti.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Present.
Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Thank you, President Wayne. Superintendent Evans, Board, tonight the school's spotlight shines very brightly on Davis. The state-of-the-art building is set to be honored this evening with a plaque that denotes its environmental friendliness and sustainability. Here to present the LEED Silver Certified Plaque are representatives from the DLR Group here in Omaha. Please join me now in welcoming them.
I'm Katie Ramsbottom with DLR Group along here with Tom Penny. From the beginning, the School Board and Planning Committee decided the LEED rating system would be a guiding principle for the design of Davis Middle School. Tonight, we'll share with you some of the great environmental outcomes of this design. Seventy-six percent of construction waste was diverted from the landfill during construction, totaling 988 tons of construction waste. This school is designed to reduce the heat island effect by providing over 4,000 square feet of vegetated green roof space. This school is also designed to reduce potable water consumption by installing low-flow fixtures and drought-tolerant landscaping. It was also designed to save over 35% energy usage beyond energy code requirements. And on average, each student diverts 1.1 cubic yards of waste per year by recycling at one of nine recycling centers. Other OPS middle schools average about .8 cubic yards per student per year. Because of some of these and many other qualities of the school, the school achieved LEED Silver Certification with 53 points.
Big award for Davis, ladies and gentlemen. Give it up for him one more time, please.
Mrs. Fay.
I just have a question that maybe you all can answer real quick. When we go through and our LEED certified, go through the process and become LEED certified, and you list the energy efficiencies, and does that result in cost savings for the district beyond the construction process? Does it result in some?
Absolutely, it does. And that's something we look at in the design is life cycle cost analysis, weighing the upfront costs against overall energy savings and ultimately your utility bill savings with gas, electric, so on and so forth. So yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all the work that it took to do this, and I'm glad the district made that commitment, and I hope that we will continue to do so on any new construction. So thank you.
Moving on to treasure report.
Mr. President, Board Members, the July Treasurers Report is attached for your review.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things to note. I've had an opportunity to go out to over 20 of our schools last week and this week with the start of school, and happy to report we've had very minimal transportation issues. And also have to report, in some cases kind of a challenge, but enrollment is either at the same level or higher in almost every school that I've visited so far. And I do know that Dr. Garnett in HR is currently looking at some classes where we may have some balancing of some high enrollment versus low enrollment, and in some cases, maybe having to use paras in some classes where the school doesn't have any more rooms to add teachers. So I wanted the Board to be aware, we are aware, HR is aware, and we're working diligently on that, and that the start of the year has gone very well. So very optimistic about where we're headed and about the start that we've had so far.
Board Member Reports. Mrs. Gotti.
I've been at a number of different events as the school year has started off, but I want to draw one to all of the Board's attention. In the spring, Building Healthy Futures received a $25,000 grant from Children's Hospital and Medical Center to be used to implement an obesity prevention and healthy living club at Northwest. And so the students came together and created a committee to be a part of this, the leadership team, and invited me to come out and be a part of the leadership training that they were doing one day. And so I sat through part of it and was really impressed with the students and with what they're doing to help their fellow students. So the club's focus that they sent to me is on healthy eating nutrition, the importance of physical activity and positive body image. And they've been working all summer to put the club together and get everything organized for the school year. So I just want to give a shout out to them. They did a great job, and they're, they're great leaders for their school.
Any other? Mrs. Underwood.
I don't really have anything to report, but I just wanted to reiterate how proud I am of the fact that OPS has really been a leader when it comes to energy-efficient buildings and specifically LEED-certified school buildings. I think that not only does that send a message to our students, but it's a really smart thing to do when we're an organization that owns building stock for a long time. So I just wanted to mention that because I think it's worth noting.
Any other Board Member Reports?
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I had an opportunity to attend the Million Father March at Wakanda Elementary with people in the community, and we greeted a lot of parents coming to school on a beautiful Monday, which it started to get kind of hot. So, you know, it was very interesting, and the main thing that I loved about it was you saw so many fathers bringing their little girls to school, which, you know, I don't have kids, but I look forward to doing that one day soon. So, pretty good.
Mr. Vargas, followed by Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I also had the privilege of attending an event that was led by the Latinos Center of the Midlands, and it had parents from South and parents from Bryan with their, with their high school students, basically engaging in a series of workshops for parent engagement, a series of workshops for other organizations in the area. And it was just really great to have so many families that were there and taking almost like a half day out of a very, very sunny day to be indoors and engaging in these conversations, preparing their, their children for the school year. It was really great, and I had the opportunity also to be in many schools in my area, Castalar and others, and it was great to be part of the first week of school.
Ms. Williams, followed by Ms. America.
I had the pleasure on the first day of school to attend the Million Father March with Mr. Evans, and it was at Mountview. Just a wonderful event. I've been there for the past three years and have watched it grow over the three years, and so it was just a great opportunity to be able to speak out, and it was a great opportunity to be the only woman on the stage as well. But it was great to see the fathers and to see so many prevalent individuals from our community coming out and really reaching out to the fathers. So it was just wonderful, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Evans for coming out and celebrating with us at Mountview. It was awesome. It was, it was more than fun. It was awesome. Thank you.
Ms. America.
I also had the privilege on the first day of school of going to my old high school, Bryan High, to help welcome the almost 500 freshmen that they have this year, which was really exciting because their morning started with another 2001 grad, Jacob Palermo, who's a professional musician in Los Angeles. And so the class of 2001 kind of bookended their full day. And it's also the 50th anniversary this year of when Bryan opened in the middle school building. So I hope to see everyone at the many events that they are planning to go on this year.
The other Board Member Reports. Seeing that, we'll move to public comment. First, we have... Alexa Carlson. Please spell your last name, your address, and you'll have five minutes. Mr. Ray will let you know when there is one minute left, 30 seconds, and then when your time is up.
I'm Alexa Carlson, A-L-E-X-A-C-A-R-L-S-O-N. My address is 60010 North 166th Street. I'm a seventh grader at Davis Middle School. In fifth grade, the parents of my best friend decided to send her to Millard for Middle School. This was hard for me because I had to find new friends at a new school. Going into middle school without any good friends was not easy. Now I have met new friends, but unfortunately, many of the, many of my new friends don't know where they are going to high school because their parents want to send them to another district. My sister is a fourth grader at Saddle Brook Elementary, and some of her friend, best friends at dance and on her softball team all live in the Saddle Brook attendance area, but their parents opt them into Grace Abbott Elementary School. We want to ask you to find, help, we want to ask you to help us find a solution that will address the concerns of our friends' parents, so we are able to go to high school with our friends and not have to start over like I did in middle school.
Thank you. Next, we have Becky Sandiland. Please spell your last name and your address, and you'll have five minutes. Mr. Ray will let you know when there's one minute and when there's 30 seconds left.
Thank you. Sandil- or last name spelled, S-A-N-D-I-L-A-N-D, Sandiland. Address is 5701 North 160th Avenue in Omaha. I'd like to thank the Board for having the opportunity to speak to you this evening. It is something I've longed to do. I'd like to start by saying I am here tonight representing mostly my own personal opinions, but I'm also here on behalf of many parents with Saddle Brook Elementary. We do have a group here with us this evening, but we have a PTA meeting this evening, and we have several projects for our teachers that we have had, most of our parents needed to be there because we have a very active PTA. So I, a group of us had gotten, were together this weekend discussing some of our concerns and what we wanted to address today at the meeting, and a few of us are here to speak on that point. I want to start by saying that I am very excited about what this Board is doing to make the changes for the future of OPS. I tend to be a person that looks forward, but I also do want to take the opportunity to acknowledge the past and the failure of past boards and in largely our community and the failure in doing what needed to be done for OPS. My industry is related to the real estate field. I talk to a lot of people on a daily basis, and it's difficult for me to hear on a regular basis that people are moving to get out of OPS. It's something I get a little fired up about because I am a proud OPS mom, but I understand the concerns that people have as well. I'm very excited about the changes coming, and in, it's my understanding that the meeting tonight is about whether you want to pass it as one bond or two. I really got a little upset when I heard about the two, that we weren't going to go forward with the big one. It's my understanding that we need public support. I feel Omaha as a community is failing our students in the Omaha Public Schools by not passing it all in one. We, as, I heard one of you, and I'm sorry, I couldn't see who was speaking, when they acknowledged the LEED property, my children will go to Davis. I'm very lucky. My children go to Saddle Brook. I'm very lucky. But I've been in some of our other schools in this community, and they're not Saddle Brook, and they're not Davis. There's children eating in schools with windows open and birds flying in because there's no screens on the windows. There's children learning in schools that don't have air conditioning. This is just flat-out unacceptable, in my opinion. I get very upset when I hear about this. I am lucky my kids are in a new area, but the kids that are in other areas deserve it too. So what I want the Board to do is be bold, be brave, and go and get what this community needs. The students that are in OPS, there's 51,000 of them, there should be 59 because we have so many that opt out, are our future employees and citizens of our community. If we don't give them the proper buildings to learn in, they will not have the ability to do what they need to do as adults. And that's a failure on the community, business, and otherwise. So in light of that, whether we get two bonds or one, I want the Board to be aware of what we need with that money. If we're going to go forward with one bond, I think that it is important that the money be spent to build changes to the schools that are in our community. I can only speak for my personal community because that's where I'm familiar with. I want my children to be able to go to our homeschool. I live in Planning Area C. We don't have a neighborhood school, which is a part of our initiative. I'd like to see land purchased for a high school and a high school built in West Omaha. I want to see changes done to the high schools that we have, Burke. There is absolutely no reason that this Burke should be so far over capacity. There are students that never go to their lockers because it's like salmon swimming upstream-
One minute.
-in a, in the halls during breaks. And I could talk for an hour, apparently. I have a lot of things. So, one of the things I'd like to see is Northwest and Burke High School get the things that they need to be safe and viable schools, making no more portables. I want the school planning facilities to be, or school planning system to be done where the schools get their home area, schools get in first, and then they don't-
Thirty seconds.
...let anybody else out after that. And then another key point for me is special education. I need my kid, who's a fifth grader, who can't read because of a profound learning disability, to get the same services that kids at low to moderate income neighborhoods get, and I have to pay for on a private, out of my own private funds, because there's not enough of those kids at our school for us to get the funding for my kids' needs. Thank you. Be bold. Do what OPS needs for our community, and I would ask that the community make that investment as well.
Next, we have Sean Bungee. Please state your first and last name, spell out your last name, address. Mr. Ray will let you, you have five minutes to speak. Mr. Ray will let you know when there is one minute, 30 seconds left, and when your time is up.
It's Sean Bungee. Everybody butchers it, it's okay. B-O-N-G-E. My address is 12918 Jackson Street. I'm an OPS graduate and currently have children at Burke, Beverage, and Columbian. This evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the families from those schools. I first want to thank Mr. Evans and the OPS Board for taking on this very large task. I know you as Board Members in particular, our volunteers, and I appreciate the sacrifice both you and your families have made to serve our community. My understanding is that the safety of all buildings is the first action of business with passing of the bond issue. I have some concerns regarding safety at both Beverage and Burke. Beverage has been held up as an example as to why OPS needs such a large bond issue. As a parent, I couldn't see any other way than a complete teardown as a solution to the problem. I understand that it has gone from a completely new building to a renovation. I'm putting my faith in the Board that this will be the best decision regarding the Beverage facilities. However, I am still concerned about safety when it comes to traffic patterns and the buses. Beverage has approximately 28 buses on the north side of the building at the end of the day. That would be the safest place for families to pick up their child, but it is not because of the numbers of buses and the safety hazard for children to get through or around the buses. The other option has children crossing 120th Street. I have watched the cars in that area and the lack of patience they have for kiddos crossing the street. The Beverage parking lot is, to put it nicely, a nightmare. It is a danger for drivers and their passengers to get in and out of, and a challenge for school-sponsored events due to the lack of space available. I am asking that the Board assemble a group of parents and staff from Beverage who will meet before and throughout the renovation process to get input and gather a greater understanding of the daily workings of the school. I will volunteer to serve on such a committee if one is assembled. I am also concerned for the safety of our students at Burke. Currently, the building holds approximately 2,100 students, and with staff, approximately 2,300 people are in the building at one time. As I'm sure you all know, that building was not designed to have anywhere near that number of people at one time. As my daughter has so eloquently explained, and my other parent has said, quote, "Mom, we are like salmon swimming upstream." I am not only asking, but I am begging you to cap Burke at a lower number of students. There are more opportunities for safety issues during passing periods with that many students in the building. I would also ask you to consider how much you would like your job if you had to be squished up against your coworkers every time you had to move from one area of your office to the next. It sounds silly, but school is about morale and having pride in where you go and what you do every day, and that is affected when the kids are packed into a building. Along with capping enrollment at a lower number than it currently is, I'm asking the Board to reconsider the renovations to Burke and put the cafeteria back into the bond. There may have been minor improvements to the cafeteria over the years, but as a graduate, it appears that it has not been touched in over 25 years, and yes, I just showed you how old I am. My final request is regarding curriculum. OPS has a large branding problem. This is no surprise to anyone in this room. One of the issues that I am most passionate about is offering strong curriculum to students at all levels. Right now, the perception is that in high school, if you take a quote "on-grade-level" course, you would deal with students who don't want to learn, the curriculum is dumbed down, or there will be discipline problems. This information is also being shared by staff members of our schools. I have personally been told this. I don't say this to begrudge the staff. In fact, I appreciate their candor, but if it is, what is happening, it has to stop. As an educator, I want students to feel good about their abilities, and I want students to know that it is perfectly okay with being on-grade level. That is where they are supposed to be. All students are not necessarily geared for all areas of curriculum. As a student who is strong in math may not be so in English, and should feel comfortable in his or her choice of taking honors math courses, but an on-grade-level English course.
One minute.
Therefore, I'm asking that as we move forward, we guarantee a rigorous differentiated curriculum for all students, and that those students who are disruptive be removed so those who are there to learn can do so. I am proud to be an OPS alum, and I'm proud to be an OPS parent. I'm excited about where OPS is going, and I know that it will be hard work, but as you can see by the red here tonight, you have a lot of parents who are ready to go to work. We ask that you continue to keep open communication as we move forward-
Thirty seconds.
...and I thank you for your time.
Nicole DePreez, please state your first and last names, spell out your last name and your address. You also have five minutes. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute and then 30 seconds.
Thank you. My name is Nicole DePrey, and it's D-E-P-R-E-Z, and my address is 4313 North 157th Avenue, 68116. Can't remember. As I said, my name is Nicole DePrey, and I'm a parent of a sixth grader at Buffett Middle School and a second grader at Standing Bear Elementary. I also am a graduate of an OPS high school and actually attended kindergarten through 12th grade. I'm also currently a Realtor with MP Dodge. I stand before you this evening representing Standing Bear and Buffett parents, and truly all parents and homeowners in Northwest Omaha. The definition of perception is a way of regarding, understanding, or interpreting something. I think that currently, the Omaha Public School System is struggling with a perception problem, and it's having an impact in Northwest Omaha in terms of attendance at our school, meaning attendance as far as families staying in the district, home values, and the family's investment in the community. Families are starting to move earlier and earlier out of the community to Bennington, Elkhorn, Millard, and now these days, DC West. That's the new hotspot. I haven't met a family that has anything less than glowing comments about our elementary school, but they're concerned at what lies ahead for their students in middle or high school. Families are selling their homes for a loss and through their process just to move to another school district. What does that say for us in OPS? It just adds to that negative perception. Some comments I've heard when asking other families what their perception of Omaha Burke High School or Northwest High School. I've heard Burke is overcrowded, it's busting at the seams, it's full of drugs and bad kids. If you aren't involved in sports or music, you get lost in the shuffle. Tons of buses with very few kids on board. That same parent said, "I live in the school's home area, and I need a bus, but I can't get one. It's not safe. I want something smaller," and we all know that smaller's not always better. While some of these perceptions may be true, some of them are not, and they're not, and they're all reasons why families are fleeing the Northwest OPS attendance area for other schools. Parents are afraid, and fear is crippling our schools in Northwest Omaha. I know that as an OPS graduate, I feel like I received a great education, and I know what's being offered to our children today is far beyond what I received because we're always out there trying to better what we offer. So why are we allowing this public perception to bleed out all of our Northwest Omaha families to other districts? We need OPS to be more transparent and hold more public forums to disseminate the correct information about our schools. Organize advisory boards to get more parent involvement. Share the successes that we're having at our high schools and middle schools. The more parents and community members that know these positive things, the better and quicker we can modify that overall perception. quicker we can modify that overall perception. I appreciate that the Board is proposing a two-tier plan, or whether it's a one-tier or a two-tier plan, the future for a Northwest Omaha high school. And I think that what, it's a positive impact, what it will do for families. If you find land for Northwest Omaha High School and you stick a sign in that area, people will come, they will stay, and they will invest themselves again in our Northwest Omaha schools. I personally bought my home, I live across the street from Standing Bear Elementary, and when I bought my home in 1999, there was a sign that said, "Future OPS Elementary School." That's what caused me to really push my husband to buy that house. If you build it, they will stay. I feel like that's the truth. As an active member of the Standing Bear PTO and past president, I've seen firsthand the decline
One minute.
Student population. Over the last three years, we have lost approximately 10% of our population at Standing Bear to other schools outside of our district. This year, we lost 41 families or 48 students. These families are, like I said before, going to Elkhorn, Millard, and so forth. And parents are starting to not invest their time into our PTO, to our school activities. And so those of us that are active in those things
Thirty seconds.
Sort of having to do it all. Again, to, you know, to repeat some of the same things, you know, others have mentioned as far as transportation and so forth, you know, I think all of those are important aspects. It's not just about a brand-new school, but it's about correcting some of those issues with transportation and safety as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Doug Kagan, please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name, address, and you'll have five minutes. And Mr. Ray, I'll let you know when there's one minute left and then when your time is up.
Good evening. My name is Doug Kagan, K-A-G-A-N, 12320 Williams Street, Omaha. And I represent Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our group has increasing concerns about this proposed bond issue. First, scheduling a meeting at the last minute like last Thursday over the supper hour and burying the bond information deep in your website does not generate taxpayer praise. Issuing two sets of bonds is a bad idea, as the cumulative property taxes collected would total more than from your initial 683 million proposal. A possible hike of 10 to 16 cents for the first, 10 to 14.5 cents rate increase for the second. I compare it to asking taxpayers to swallow one teaspoon of castor oil at a time instead of one tablespoon all at once. Moreover, the district could not pay off the first bond issue before issuance of the second. But our main criticism is that Board still has not shown the taxpaying public a specific itemized list of repairs, renovations, security improvements, technology upgrades, and construction projects at individual locations, as the Millard School District did in its last bond issue. The list appears to change continually. The district should have secured pledges of private contributions in writing weeks ago. OPS supposedly paid for a survey to find out which areas of voters would more likely vote for a bond issue. This cynical ploy is even more offensive if the Board plans to use the bond monies mostly in these areas, a sort of voter bribe. You are asking voters to write the district a blank check. In conclusion, we urge the Board to put the bond issue on a diet and work with the public and us to compile a list of fixes for the dire necessities and explore alternatives such as energy performance contracts that would save money. Then we can all unite to forge ahead to achieve a safe and healthy environment for our schoolchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Melissa Eich. Please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name, address, and you'll have five minutes. And Mr. Ray, I'll let you know when there's one minute left and when there's thirty seconds in the timer.
Hi, I'm Melissa Eich, which is E-I-C-H, and my address is 16320 Erskine Street. I'm the current president of the Picot Elementary PTA, where I have two daughters in third and fourth grades. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of my family and all the families like mine in our school regarding our children's future in this district as high schoolers. As my children have grown up in Picot Elementary, where they have had amazing experiences, I've watched their class sizes dwindle as we approach middle school age. And while small class sizes can be seen as a huge plus, this is also a sign of something else in this case, the max exodus of OPS families to neighboring districts and private schools for one reason, a vote of no confidence in the options for high school in the Burke and Northwest attendance areas. The belief in my area is that these two high schools are overcrowded and/or do not offer the same safety, academic challenges, facilities, and transportation options as neighboring smaller districts and private schools. Personally, I appreciate the larger, diverse school communities that our district will offer my children in high school. And from families and students that I know at Burke and Northwest, I believe the academic options are already there for students, and there are many success stories to be told. For these reasons, my daughters will be attending an area OPS high school when the time comes, and we would like to see their friends and neighbors there, too. And if my peers at Picot knew more about the successes of students and faculty at Burke and Northwest, the programs offered in the district's commitment to improving these schools, as well as plans for new area high school in the next five years, I think they would be planning for their children to attend OPS high school with mine. So far, with the proposed bond options, whether it be one or two phases, the Board is definitely taking steps in this direction. I am encouraged to see that plans for a third high school in the Northwest area are included and that immediate improvements to Burke and Northwest High School are proposed. How can we get the word out about the unique opportunities at these high schools now and in the future, and in the process motivate families like mine to actively support the necessary bond initiatives? This is a PR challenge that I would like to see the Board address aggressively to all of our concerns, to all of our benefits. The way that the bond and other immediate actions by the Board address area families' concerns about how our district can serve their children in high school will directly impact voter support for the bond among families like mine. I would encourage the Board to utilize the funds designated for projects at Burke and Northwest to ensure the safety and enriching environments for current and future students, specifically with improvements to create safer, more secure, inviting building entrances at both schools, new additional storm shelters at both campuses, and additional cafeteria space at Burke to allow an academically beneficial schedule for the number of students that are enrolled there. Lastly, until these projects can be completed, there are a couple of immediate opportunities to address the many families that are concerned about our high school options. Specifically, the district needs to start dialogues promoting OPS high schools with young district families in the elementary schools, encouraging continuing their education path within the district, and highlighting student and faculty successes in our high schools, as well as successes and achievements of alumni from Omaha Public Schools. Most importantly, I would ask the Board to very carefully examine the current transportation plan. Currently, a large number of students who live beyond safe walking distance are not eligible for transportation to their area high school. This creates a situation where they choose an alternate high school option solely based on the transportation being offered. I still believe that OPS should offer options, choices, and magnet schools to all students to create beneficial academic opportunities, but I don't think students should be selecting a distant school due to a transportation problem. The issue reaches beyond
One minute.
Our immediate area in Northwest Omaha and should be addressed district-wide. In closing, the parents and families at my school and in my area would greatly appreciate your consideration of our perspective as you move forward with the bond initiatives. Actions demonstrate commitment to current OPS students, and our young, future high school students will encourage our community to support your efforts to fund these projects, as well as excite OPS families about our high school options. Thank you.
Jim Skirvin. Please state your name, last name, correct spelling, and probably correct enunciation of your name the way I've been going tonight. You'll have five minutes.
I hate to tell you, my name's Jim Skirvin, and it's close, you're close, man, it's all right. So spelled S-K-R-I-V-A-N, and I'm at 6209 North 151st Street. Up until a few weeks ago, I wouldn't have an answer why I was here. Matter of fact, after, I lived in the Cathedral neighborhood for a number of years, my wife and I, and then we moved out west, stayed in the OPS district, and said, "Well, they don't have schools there, but they'll come." And then I've got a student that's in Saddlebrook, so Saddlebrook was built, and it was there. And now I've got two at Davis, and Davis was built, and said, "Well, they'll figure out the high school thing," about one being closer to us, and it didn't happen. And, you know, I really thought, we really don't have, I don't know what other options we have, and a couple other points I bring up, and I started listening to a lot of really good things that are going on in OPS that I didn't know about. I work for a software company that's in West Omaha, and I work with a lot of people that have sold their homes or are moving. The stories you've heard before from many other people are, have said really derogatory things to OPS that are really not based upon fact in a lot of cases. I mean, there's real things we need to solve, and I mean, if I look at some of the concerns in which I think are included is the base level and some of the bond issues, really around safety for our schools. I mean, because I just mentioned, my kids have gone to Saddlebrook and Davis, they have the luxury of having brand-new schools that have brand-new security procedures and everything else in place. But my kids play basketball at Saddlebrook and got to travel around to some of the schools and see firsthand the stated decay of some of the schools, just frankly because the funding wasn't there to put it together. So I could stand here and say, "All I care about is Northwest Omaha," but the reality is, I care about OPS, because it all affects everything, too. And so, you know, we've had a lot of people from Northwest Omaha up here, but the reality is, there's things we need to fix there. I mean, another fact, thing that I care about is academics. And when I started looking at the numbers of the NESA scores, Northwest is where my kids would go, and I look at the numbers there compared to other OPS schools, compared to some of the other districts, they're lower. And I really started thinking about that a lot. And it's not just about what types of steps are we taking to fix Northwest, but what are we doing about the elementary schools and the junior highs and creating better learning environments of the kids that feed into those environments? Because if there's an issue with the learning and some of the test scores, it started a lot earlier than the ninth grade. And so I think this bond issue can slowly start addressing some of those issues. And I'm not a person that's going to stand up here and talk about the exact money and the funding, the phases, and everything else, but it's more about the fact that we do need to invest more in the system. And it would be nice to have a homeschool option that's closer to a West Omaha high school, that's built, that's closer to where I live, but the reality is, there's things that we can do right now to fix those. And, you know, the final piece that I leave you with is really around transparency, and it's been spoken from both sides of this issue around the transparency, and one of them is transparency on the current process. And it's through the, God, in that I heard some really good things that have gone on that frankly, until I took the time to listen, which, I mean, the reality is, we can't get everyone to listen. That's the, that's the truth. But there's things we need to do to try and to talk about what we have done right now. And as we move forward with this bond, whether it's one big piece, whether it's a phased issue, is, I think there has to be this transparency or regular progress of, here's what we are doing to improve things with the high school. And it could be as simple as, as someone mentioned, putting a sign when we buy the property and when that school's coming. But I also think it's talking about, what is it we're doing to improve things? Because over time, we can change perceptions, I believe, and it's a matter of word of mouth. Because frankly, a lot of the bad information I heard isn't from reading the news, it isn't from any press releases, it's from talking to my neighbors, talking to people that think they know what the truth is. And I think the way you beat misinformation is through providing more information, more frequent information. And I guess that's what I would encourage more than anything, what I leave you with, is that as you move forward with this plan, because everyone's clearly acknowledged that we need to improve the system, is how to build more transparency and more frequent communication so that we can build trust in a perception. And I thank the Board and the President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tiffany Jokel. Please state your, Jako.
I mean, I've been corrected all night, so let's keep it, keep it consistent. Last name and then your address, and then you'll have five minutes.
Sure. Well, thank you. My name is Tiffany Jokel, J-O-E-K-E-L. I live at 1114 Jones Street. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. I was here two weeks ago to discuss the community eligibility option that's now available to all schools nationwide. And last two weeks ago, we talked about, or I spoke about how we were really hopeful that OPS would be able to move forward in some fashion in some of the 46 eligible school buildings that are now potentially eligible to offer universal free meals to the entire student population because of their high poverty level within the buildings. I just wanted to provide a quick update. I know Tammy is on the agenda from OPS staff, and will give you all the details that you want in that piece, but I did want to take the opportunity to really thank the Board for your interest in this option. Thanks Superintendent Evans and for the OPS staff for the clear commitment of time and their expertise that they've put to this issue. We had a meeting this morning with the Department of Education, and seven OPS staff were present. And I just want to publicly thank them for the expertise they brought to the meeting, but also their willingness to really think through the issue from all angles and to be very solution-oriented. We presented a number of ideas about ways we might be able to overcome some of the barriers that they presented, and they were very open to them and thoughtful, and so I wanted to be sure that they got the appreciation and recognition that they deserved for that. It was certainly a great first step towards perhaps putting together some sort of a pilot program. One major development that came out of today's meeting was Nebraska Department of Education did indicate a willingness to accept applications for community eligibility after the August 31st deadline. So that is, of course, a huge first barrier that we've gotten removed. We talked a lot this morning about, in the community eligibility schools, in those schools with the very high poverty rates, potentially implementing an alternate income form. So rather than collecting free and reduced applications, we could gather that same data in a way that isn't, then on the other side, meals, you know, coming with that application. So essentially, we hope that there might be ways that the buildings would have all of that same income data available to them to use in Title I or E-Rate or TOSA, but it wouldn't be collected in the form of an application. So we could still continue to provide those meals universally in a number of schools. I think we did leave with some question marks, certainly, so I don't want to stand here and pretend like we've got the world figured out. But I think what did happen today was exactly what I hoped would happen two weeks ago when I stood before you, which was to get all the expertise in one room, to put our heads together, and really start thinking through some of these barriers, what's insurmountable, what isn't, and what steps do we need to get there. So ultimately, I wanted to thank the Board for your leadership on this issue. I wanted to thank OPS staff, Superintendent Evans, for your leadership. It's clear that OPS is committed to making our schools hunger-free, and we as advocates commit to continue to work and be as helpful as we can in any regard so we can move forward on a pilot. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Teresa Van. Please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name, address, and you'll have five minutes. And Mr. Ray, I'll let you know when there's one minute and when
Teresa, T-E-R-E-S-A, Van, V-A-N-N, 14457 Patrick Avenue. I'm back. You're going to be surprised, though, tonight I'm here to say thank you. Thank you, first of all, for Tom Lee, our principal at Northwest. He's doing some amazing things, and we're working really well together. We like him a lot. Secondly, I want to say that I do like the new plan for the bond issue as far as separating it out, because I have said that what you need to do is, you need to fix the schools that we have first and then build the new ones. And I think that's the appropriate way to do it. That's the only way you're going to get the entire district on board to do it. And people have made comments, "If we don't do this, then this part of OPS won't support it, and that part won't." We all have to support all of it, or we're not going to get it passed, and nobody's going to get anything, and then all of our property values suffer. But I want to, I'm not going to stick with what I was originally going to say, because I have to respond to some of the things that have already been said. I've been telling you guys in my emails that I keep pestering you with, that the biggest issue that OPS has is perception. And I really believe that's true. We're not selling our product. And I have a child at Northwest High School, and so for all those people that are having the big issue about the overcrowding at Burke, we still have some room at Northwest. And we invite you to come take a look at Northwest. When we had the community meeting at Burke to talk about this facilities master plan, I sat with a bunch of parents whose kids are from that same part of town, and they kept telling me how they had never heard anything good about Northwest. Well, I'm telling you that there is a lot of good stuff going on at Northwest. My child has been at Northwest High School since she was a year old, because my husband's been teaching and coaching there all that time. She grew up there. I teach in Elkhorn. Elkhorn is a fabulous school district, but I keep telling you, Northwest High School is a fabulous school. And you guys, we need to market it. People don't know. And part of the reason they don't know is because when they walk into that building to go to a basketball game, all they see is a small, old gym, and they come in one of two back doors. That's, that's the problem. When, in fact, I had been going up there to basketball games for 14 When, in fact, I had been going up there to basketball games for 14 years, and I had never gone back far enough in the building to see the classrooms until my daughter started Northwest last year as a freshman, or the year before when she was doing the orientation. And you know what? As a social studies teacher, even in Elkhorn, I was envious of the social studies department and some of the programs and course offerings that they have at Northwest High School. The public needs to learn and understand what we have. And so, you know, and people are talking about, several of the people that came up here talked about, you know, the, the bad reputation that we have, but part of that is being perpetuated by our own residents in our own part of the district. Because when you talk to people, they say, "You're really sending your child to Northwest?" I'm absolutely sending my child to Northwest. And in fact, I find it kind of insulting when people act like that's not, you know, it's not, it's out of the realm of possibility. So, but most of the people that I've talked to, I ask them, "Have you been there? Do you, have you had a kid there? You know, do you have any firsthand experience of this?" And, and most of them can never tell you that they do. And about the NISA test scores, you know, we're doing a lot of things in Elkhorn to work on that, and I believe OPS has a lot of room for growth. But one thing that they don't tell the public when they post those scores is, for every kid you can't round up, you average a zero. I know that Northwest and other OPS schools have had to take a hit on kids that they've never even seen. Kids that have not entered that building, but because nobody has taken them off the roll, they're still on there. Northwest averaged 14 zeros last year on, I believe it was their 11th grade NISA scores. Now, when you start looking at that...
One minute.
How many of you, how many of you have gone out with your staff and made them look at the power of zero presentation and about what that does to a grade book and what that does to a student's scores? Well, it does the same thing to our NISA averages. So, you know, I would just encourage people to come out and take a look at Northwest. I would encourage the board to follow the path that it looks like you've set forth for yourself. In my opinion, this is absolutely the way to go. Fix what we have so that those schools that are in disrepair are brought up to where they need to be. And then I guarantee you, the people in those schools will get behind two new schools for the people in Northwest Omaha and in Southeast Omaha. And I just think, finally, we just need to all work together, and we need to get the message out, and we need to stop badmouthing our own schools. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Rob King. Spell your, state your name, last name, spelling, address, you'll have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Rob King, K-I-N-G. My address is 13662 Laramore Avenue. I am an OPS graduate. I have a kid at Fullerton, two at Buffett, and one at Burke. I'm very excited about the new proposed bond, or bonds, whatever you want to go, and the positive impact it'll have for all students in OPS. I recognize that there are unique needs in each area of the district, all of which are important. But tonight I'm speaking about what I have firsthand knowledge of, which is Northwest Omaha. The issues I see at Northwest Omaha are for the top priorities, there's three. So the first one would be establishing school assignments, boundaries that support neighborhood schools. Parents should have the choice of sending their children to the two closest high schools from their front door, with kids that live closest to that school being given priority. I've looked at many studies showing that dropout rates are impacted by both parental involvement and student apathy. I believe promoting a neighborhood high school is important. As a parent, it's much easier to be involved when a student's school isn't across town. And I feel keeping a student's friend structure that they've obtained at junior high is critical moving to high school. When the district forces these children to pick different schools, not based on their choice, but on a boundary that really makes no sense, it's hurting only those children. Second issue would be the transportation. I really think transportation for all schools, from elementary through high school, should be set like it is for elementary, where I believe it's like one and a half miles away. It should be provided either free or a parental pay option, something like that, so we can get those kids, who has been mentioned before, opt to a different school solely based on that transportation need. Taking the above two, you know, first one and the second one, I do think that would help foster a much stronger sense of school pride for that home community school. And lastly, I think it's been touched again, but improve communication to the public regarding the amazing options and high-quality programs available in each of OPS high schools. The negative perception about OPS high schools is pervasive. I know too many families who've had either moved out or opted out of the district without ever having stepped foot inside one of the schools in OPS. I do think a new high school will help, but will not address the root cause of the problems. There are countless examples of achievements that go unnoticed on a daily basis. For example, my nephew, who just graduated from Burke, had attained 46 college credit hours. He beat the record for the number of credits at UNL's honors program for an incoming freshman. This type of achievement is not public knowledge, but it should be. That was a financial savings his mother estimated to be over $12,000 just on tuition. In closing, I've always, it's always been my opinion that a community must support all kids by ensuring high-quality education. There are multiple rankings, especially that just came out, that list Omaha in the top five of the city to raise a family or to live, and all of those included public schools in that ranking. In order to maintain this type of ranking, we must invest in our schools and send a message to the 51,000 students in OPS that we believe in them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Jorgensen. Please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name, address, and you'll have five minutes.
Julie Jorgensen, J-O-R-G-E-N-S-E-N, address is 6224 North 159th Circle. I am an active mother of two OPS students, one attending Saddlebrook and the other one just beginning at Davis Middle School. I want to start by thanking each of you for taking the time to listen to us and our concerns, and together for us to work together to create a better OPS. Recently, you approved the new strategic plan for the district, citing that neighborhood schools would be the district, the direction OPS would be taking. Currently, OPS has wonderful neighborhood schools within the elementary and middle school levels. I have personally witnessed and been a part of the positive effects of neighborhood schools. The parent involvement and extended relationships formed by doing life together with your classmates and their families do not only create a foundation for lifelong friendships, but improves the learning environments. Unfortunately, we are seeing attrition at an alarming rate within our school families due to the lack of high school options and the perception of those schools. Over the past two years, with my, within my own personal circle, I am aware of 20 families who have either opted out of OPS or picked up and moved their families to neighboring districts. Our students are losing the circle of friends and the stability of those relationships that is so important during those adolescent years. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about the bond issue and what we need to improve the high schools in Planning Area C. I want to start with acknowledging that I support and understand the current two-tiered bond approach, and am hopeful that this approach will be the beginning of ongoing bond issues to ensure that we as a district do not find ourselves in the same situation in the future. As many of the parents here, we are hopeful and excited that our younger children will have a new high school to attend and make their own. However, many of us, myself included, do not have the luxury of waiting five to seven years for construction to be completed. What we need is quick forward progress on several of the initiatives already laid out in the strat plan along with tangible results. I have heard it said far too many times that the high schools in Northwest Omaha are not safe, don't provide rigorous, rigorous curriculum outside of the honors tracks, and OPS does not care if we leave. I am not a graduate of OPS, I merely moved here into the district with a toddler, having no idea what the school system was like. I have since become appreciative and very supportive and outspoken for OPS. And I want to see these negative comments go away and make way for positive, encouraging comments about the schools my children are to attend. We need your help and support to do this. We need to create excitement and community around these two high schools, providing choice of either school to all Planning Area C students with first priority going to our students in the home attendance area. These are currently their home schools, and although they are their home attendant schools, they are certainly not neighborhood schools. So we must figure out the busing policy and processes so that these students are not either excluded from busing and/or are on the buses for extended periods of time affecting their ability to do homework. We absolutely need focus on safety in all of our schools. Buildings should have inviting and safe entrances. I would encourage you to allocate dollars to make Northwest High School an inviting entrance and proper security. In addition, both our high school options need tornado shelters, standard classrooms, and appropriate cafeterias, given the sizes of these schools. These are basic items that provide safety and solid learning environments. Students should not have to worry about these items. I cannot tell you how many times I've heard about the curriculum or test scores at Northwest High School. I understand that there are lots of reasons why these comments are made. Statistically speaking, Northwest does have the lowest test scores and graduation rates and highest dropouts rates in the district. This is scary information for parents. We have also heard that the honors tract is wonderful, and if they had, then that they had a student with perfect ACT scores a couple of years ago. However, this is just word of mouth, I haven't seen anything outside of that. What we need is a well-rounded curriculum for all of our students. Not all of our students will fall into the honors courses, but they need to be challenged in classes where other students have the desire to learn, thrive to improve, and support to excel. I am eager to see and hear about changes being made at Northwest. On a side note, I've also heard that it is the best-kept secret in Omaha, and those that attend it love it. We need to get this information out. It is hard to know what to do as a parent with the current states, stats, and perception. Finally, we need communication, and lots of it. We need to hear from you directly about the plans to improve the above items, progress on those plans, and finally tangible results. In addition to progress on the new high school land plans and construction, we need a marketing plan to showcase what's going on in the schools. As we all stand before you tonight to show our support for our children and student body of OPS, we want, we need to work together. I personally do not want to move my family out of the district or opt to a private school. I'm willing to dedicate and support OPS's plans to improve our schools and the perception that surrounds them. I'm hopeful, hopeful we will see results so that my now-middle-schooler can attend one of the two Planning Area C schools with confidence and excitement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Carlson. Please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name and address.
Lisa Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N, 610 North 166th Street. Ms. Teresa Van, is that, was that your name? You have an open standing invitation to our Davis PTO night, if you'd like to come talk about Northwest. We'd love it. All right, so, members of the Board of Education, I hope it's very, very clear, after listening to all of our parents, what we are asking for. I do want to state this, though. While we all met over the weekend, and I think we would support the bond in the way, whether it's two tiers or one, I don't think that we, we have a lot of other parents who are not maybe as quick to support this. And they are much more skeptical because they just haven't gotten the word like we all did over the weekend. So I think we still have a lot of work left to do. So I want to be very clear on this. We understand there's an immediate need across all planning zones of this school district, and we support every single effort to make sure every single school is a great school. But I want to present an analogy to you. Think about a diabetic patient. Diabetes is a terrible disease. They have all kinds of issues, and they're expensive to manage. But when a diabetic patient shows up in a hospital in an ER after a severe accident with a gaping wound, the ER doctor doesn't say, "Let's figure out how to manage your diabetes." They figure out how to stop the hemorrhaging, because that's what's going to kill them first. And what we have to do is, we have to stop the hemorrhaging in our district. Too many middle-class students are leaving our district because they don't believe their needs are being met. And those of us still around are kind of tired of being ignored, because it doesn't seem like anybody thinks that we have any concerns. We dislike seeing our children's, have, children having to make new friends each year because their friends leave the district. Those were my two kids. It was very hard for them to go to a brand-new school that was beautiful and not have any friends, because they all left to go to Keywood the year before. And we don't want to see our property values continue to decline. We also want our kids to be excited about going to high school, and right now, I'm willing to guess that 80% of the children at Davis Middle School don't know where they are going to high school, because their parents are waiting to see what you do and what we all do. We are trying to build a community out here that supports OPS, but without a neighborhood high school or a high school that is attractive to our parents, we are struggling. First, we will get behind this bond issue, but if this first wave passes, start buying land in Northwest Omaha. Too many parents are skeptical that you will go back on your word, so your actions will speak volumes. And please, don't disappoint us. Next, immediate action is needed at Northwest and Burke. We have proposed some very specific and realistic ideas, a new cafeteria at Burke, a new entrance at Northwest, new storm slash gym slash multipurpose areas at both schools, redesign the boundary lines, provide transportation to neighborhood schools, and I want to add one more goal. The most recent percentage of students that passed all ACT benchmarks at Burke was 22%. Northwest was nine. The state was at 28%. By the time we have to pass the second bond in 2017, I'd like to see Burke at 28, I'd like to see Northwest at 26. And if these test scores at these schools are in line with other surrounding schools, we will keep more students. In closing, we are all in OPS because we want our kids to be in a diverse school district. But I said it last week, and I'll say it again. Right now, OPS is 75% free and reduced lunch, which means you are very close to not being a very diverse school district. And if you don't stop the hemorrhaging, you will be an inner-school district soon, excuse me, inner-city school district. Our suggestion to redefine boundary lines and to build a new high school is in no way intended to segregate. It is a short-term strategy to stop the hemorrhaging of middle-class families that leave the district every year. And once we stabilize this, and we believe a new high school and renovations to Burke and Northwest will start to do it, our goal will be, in 2019, to offer a truly diverse student bodies to each of our new nine OPS high schools in our district, and that will be a benefit to all of the students that each of you serve in our community. And since I still have time, I will add that I do believe that there are taxpayers that are 65 and older or 60 and older, my parents being two of them...
One minute.
...who believe strongly in this bond issue. They have grandkids that still go to our schools. They have property values that they're trying to maintain. And I see it as, we've had 15 years of a tax break in OPS or in the Omaha area. We haven't had a bond issue since then. OPS and, or, excuse me, Millard and Elkhorn have passed numerous ones. I personally live in Bennington, I pay a higher tax rate, but I send my kids to OPS, and it's time, it's overdue for us to have...
Thirty seconds.
...a bond issue at this point. So thank you again for your comments. I know it's a hard job. You've done, you've moved mountains in about a year and a half, and I know you have a lot of work ahead of you. We appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you.
Next, we have Jim Sazama.
That's Sazma, young man. S-A-Z-A-M-A.
I do apologize. Okay? But I just want you to know, it wasn't just me who, I had asked other, never mind.
It's called Bohemian American, buddy. 9161 Charles Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I've been in this fine community for a long time, and when I came in the door tonight, I very pleasantly just, I got accosted by some of the young ladies sitting over here because they attended school in our Omaha Public School System with our three daughters. My bride gave us three daughters. Now, we've been through the University of Nebraska and all that rigmarole and whatnot. Now I'm a granddad, grandpa. And you know something, gentlemen? I've heard a lot of comments here, some bleeding hearts, some things make sense, some things don't. But I'm gonna, I wish you'd shut that camera off, because I don't need to be on TV, okay? Okay. Anyway, back to business at hand here. You guys are almost dysfunctional. And what I mean by dysfunctional is, I get to interact with people out here every day, just like you guys do, and it's appalling to me how some of our people, young people, they can't even count. You know, you go in to buy something, and you give them 12 cents more than what it was, and they can't even make even change out, out here. Now, we're supposed to be educating people out here to the best of our ability. Now, we got a lot of things happening around our fine world today, and, you know, OPS has been a pretty decent school system. But, you know, and when our daughters were going to school, they attended Burke High School, and I sat there one day in the parking lot, and I watched 18 school buses come motoring up to Burke High School and unload people. Now, where were all these buses come from? I went home and asked my wife, "Where are these coming from?" And she said, "I don't know where they're coming from." So I asked our daughters, and I got to find out what we're doing. We're doing more of that today. And when I said, "You guys are dysfunctional," you guys need to look into some of the places we're spending money out here, because the product that you guys are turning out, it could be a lot better, baby. Because if you interact with any of these young people out here today, even college graduates, they can't count. But I do know something. And you guys got your binkies with you? Binkies? You know, they call them iPhones, iPads, whatnot? They walk around like this. And you've seen people in stores go shopping. Hell, they run into doors and everything. They can be standing next to three or four people. Instead of talking to one another verbally, they're going to lose their communication skills, because they're texting one another. It's, for a guy my vintage, it's hard to understand where we're going here. But you put them on a computer, boy, they can find anything. But you ask them a question, they don't know, have any answer. But they get their binky out, they can find that for you. But wait another twenty years, they won't even be able to talk to one another. You guys know that. But seriously, you guys are trying to sell something here, because we have to improve things. You know, the schools. We want to build more schools. Well, that's fine. You know, but I'm one of these working guys. I have since retired in March, and I was, flew all over the world as an aviation safety inspector. So, I've been around the, I didn't fall off a turnip truck the other day, been around places you guys haven't even been. Now, I would wish you guys would take a look at how we're spending our money here. We don't need all these buses, and I heard some of the people talk about it. We'd like to have our kids go to school in the community where they live and play and whatnot. But we don't. We take them from here, and we bus them thirty, forty miles. It's not that far, I know. But we need to take a look at that, and you guys need to look at those things. I don't know if you do or not, but that's a suggestion on my part. Maybe you guys need an investigative body or something to watch where you're spending the money. Another thing, you guys want a billion dollars here. Billion's a lot of money, in my game, anyway. Over the years, OPS has had funds in my tax dollars to refurbish buildings and whatnot.
One minute.
And keep nice things. You couldn't extend it fifteen, twenty minutes, could you? All right. You know, I heard a lady talk about air conditioning tonight. We'll get on that quick. You know, I walked a mile to school. It didn't make a damn thing of you guys, but I did. I walked to school, snow, rain, or shine. Now, we carried our little lunchbox and whatnot, then we did that. We walked home at night. You know, we didn't get a ride in a bus anywhere. We walked. And there was no air conditioning in the buildings. Why do we need air conditioning in school buildings, for crying out loud? Open the window, let some fresh air. These kids are supposed to go to school to learn their ABCs and how to count. They're not learning that, guys. Just look around out here. It'd surprise the heck out of you. How much time I got left?
Twelve seconds.
Twelve seconds. All right. Well, thanks for your time, guys. Take a look at yourselves, where you're spending your money. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, what do we have on time-wise for public comment?
Fifty-one minutes.
Board members, we have approximately four left, and if each of them have twenty minutes left, doing my math right, we'll be over our policy. So, I'll entertain a motion to suspend, as it relates to the minute, I mean, hour portion of policy eighty-three forty-six, and it will require a motion, a second, and a two-third votes.
I motion that we extend the time.
There's a motion to suspend the hour requirement for our policy, section eighty-three forty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mrs. Williams. Motion made by Ms. Gaudy. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this does require a two-thirds votes to suspend our policy for the hour requirement of, or hour limit on public comment. Roll call, please.
Gaudy.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Nai Nai.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll still have, per the motion, there still is the five-minute requirement. We will still continue, pass our hour limitation set in our policy. Next, we have Ms. Nancy Crackey. Please state your name, last name, spelling, and address. And you'll have five minutes.
Nancy Crackey. Twelve oh four North One Oh One Circle, six eight one one four. I didn't think my time would ever come, and then it almost didn't. I really appreciate the people coming tonight. They said a lot of things that needed to be said. Diverting from what I'm really going to say, I wanted to talk about the perception, certainly a hundred percent correct. I remember coming back from conferences with wonderful ideas, billboards, all these kinds of things, going in and listing ten or eleven things to do about PR. But it didn't occur, and that is a challenge, and we really need to do something about it. And now, I'd like to talk about what I came to say. School districts will always need to keep facilities in good repair and provide a safe environment. Our community has been abuzz with the possibility of increased taxes from OPS, as well as other community entities. While OPS residents may not realize that we serve fifty-one thousand students, and neighboring districts have a much smaller number of students, the bottom line is that they feel punished as they do the monetary bond issue comparisons. In our, in other words, they talk of needing to leave the district or Omaha in general. They have never heard the real needs. Input has been gathered, projections or estimates have been made, and are continuing to change. Transportation changes are not forthcoming. One wonders how the bond issue can proceed without that information. The public needs actual lists. Right now, it seems like they do not have enough information. It certainly could have an effect on the overall numbers. I personally do not know for a couple of reasons. If the list is somewhere, it has not been made readily available to the public. A point to be made in this regard is that all P, OPS stakeholders do not have a computer. They do not want a computer. They would not search for the OPS page or know how to, or dig down deep to see what the agendas are or what is occurring. The other reason is they have not been given the opportunity to tour the facilities. They may be new to Omaha. They may not have any children in the school district or have any children, or their children may have attended somewhere else. And there is no guarantee that voters would tour the facilities in their own sub-district or any of the other sub-districts, but they would have at least been given the opportunity. And while I'm saying that, I'd like to also encourage the board members to be certain that they have all seen the schools in their own sub-district as we move forward with this. I stated at the board meeting on July sixteenth that any support from southwest Omaha will not be happening unless the residents are able to see the benefits to their schools, the students, and how this affects the future resale of their property. And remember, they will want some guarantee that what the district says it will do before the vote will be something the district will do after the vote. There has to be a trust level. As of now, schools have been put into a ping-pong ball situation. The racket is out there, and it just depends on where the ball lands. The case in point would be beverage. Talk of renovation, change to rebuilding, a whole new school, change back to renovation. And I want to again point out that Burke is the only high school without two gyms. They have a neighboring high school, and it has three gyms now. On Thursday.
One minute.
The board bond issue facility meeting made references to catching up, serving all fifty-one thousand students, serving the greater good. The greater good does include the entire district. I want to note that for the eighteen years I served on the board whenever possible, the exodus that has been talked about here tonight was pointed out, discussed, administration was made aware, and yet the same track continued.
Thirty seconds.
Especially in the southwest part of the district. I supported the forty-two, the forty-six, and now the fifty-one thousand. But now, we have to stop, look, and listen. It is time to address southwest Omaha. Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Foster. Please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name, and address.
Hi, Chris Foster, F-O-S-T-E-R, thirty-four thirteen California Street, which is just a couple blocks from here. And kind of the irony of this is, our neighborhood, Gifford Park, does not have a neighborhood school, and, and I'd love to put future elementary school right across the street on some Creighton property, so that's, that's our goal. I appreciate you including a new elementary school to be built in the proposal for the facility plan study. And just to reiterate, I know I've sent emails, and you've gotten letters of support from all the surrounding neighborhood associations, Midtown Neighborhood Alliance, churches, residents. We have three hundred and fifty-three students in the Yates attendance area, and of those, a hundred and sixty-five go to Kellum, which is a dangerous walk even for adults from this neighborhood over to Twenty-Fourth and Hamilton. And then, a hundred and eighty-eight students get bused to thirty-nine other schools. And if you've ever been in the neighborhood in the morning or at night, it's ridiculous how many buses come in and out of this neighborhood. And Justin Wayne had written a real, real nice editorial a couple years ago about busing and the issues of, do you really get a better education with busing? I think it's pretty easy to, to know the answer to that. We've been disappointed before. This fight has been going on for fifteen years, and even as, as early or as late as, or as recent as a couple years ago, Yates was going to be a, a partial elementary school. So, until that brick is first laid for an elementary school, we're not going to stop fighting. And we believe that the families, the kids in this neighborhood deserve a neighborhood school. It's actually the most ethnically and socio-economically diverse neighborhood in the city, and we've got a great community. We've been fighting for twenty-five years to have lots of youth programs, volunteer-based, and the only thing we're missing is a neighborhood school. And I'd echo a couple of the other speakers, to be bold. I mean, this really is to help all fifty-one thousand students, and I might echo what Marion Fay had said back in July about an elementary school, that experience, if they have a good experience, they're going to stay in the OPS system and thrive, and it's just going to help all students. So, with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have James Enright. Please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name, and address, and you'll
Mr. President, members of the board, my name is James J. Enright, thirty-three oh three R Street, Omaha, six eight one oh seven. This won't take five minutes. My title of this is, Are One in Five American Children Hungry? Well, we've heard that, at least I heard it in the last meeting and this meeting, from one speaker, that we need this new program. It's a government program that'll feed everybody in these certain schools free. I mean, all the children, not the teachers. They have to be low-income students, and we're, that's before the board now. First place, I disagree with telling, teaching kids that their necessities of their life come from the government. I just fundamentally disagree with that. We should teach kids that the necessities of life will come from getting a good education and working hard. Excuse me. Instead of saying, "Well, more and more and more," everything comes from the government. Well, the government, of course, is the taxpayers. This just isn't something I want to see taught to the children. So, I think everybody ought to pay. You know, if they can afford to pay, they should pay. Even if it's two kids in the whole school, it's the principle of the thing. So, are one in children hungry? We've heard this, one in five children. That's not true. That's not what this USDA study said. What it said was, okay, the USDA classifies households as food insecure if they report worrying about not having enough money to buy food, if they substitute cheaper foods, skip meals, or eat less for financial reasons. Well, I substitute cheaper foods, so I guess I'm, I'm food insecure. It doesn't mean that people are hungry, and this is the urban myth that started here, and so I just wanted to refute that, if I could. Not publicized by the childhood hunger lobby are the USDA's most direct measures of childhood hunger. They reveal that between one and two percent of families cut the size of children's meals or report that children were hungry or skipped meals. And only one-tenth of one percent of families reported that children did not eat for a whole day. These findings do not suggest, to say the least, an epidemic of childhood hunger. The USDA's most direct measures yield a childhood hunger rate between one and two in a hundred, not one in five. One in two in a hundred is too many, for sure. And I think that's something that those people that are really hungry, those kids that are hungry, should be referred to a social worker. So, also, the food insecure family spend almost enough to buy the government-suggested minimum balance diet. Tells us that the problem is poor food choice, not hunger, per se. These food insecure families spend ninety-five cents, ninety-five percent of what the USDA says they need to spend to have an adequate diet. They're only five cents short. So, they're making poor food choices, maybe. So, I just wanted to refute that, or what's been, give my opinion, at least, in what's been said about that program that's going to be before you soon. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Willie Barney. Please state your name, last name, spelling, and address.
Good evening, board. Willie Barney, one twenty-three thirty-three Cummings Street. I thought almost about not coming to speak. I've heard a lot of comments tonight. But I want to maybe represent some of the other parents that are not here. I have the great fortune of having my daughter at Columbian, and she has some of the best teachers in the district. I mean, just an outstanding school. The school building needs a lot of work, a whole lot of work. My son had the opportunity of attending one of the best schools, I think, in the, in the state, at Wilson Folka School. He's now at Lewis and Clark. Lewis and Clark needs a lot of work, starting with the sound system in the auditorium. It needs a lot of work. And so, I look at a three-million-dollar line item for Lewis and Clark, and I'm not sure that's enough. And I'm joking about it, but it's in, I go into Lothar Elementary. I go into Franklin, and I know the district is doing as much as it possibly can to tell the story, but I wonder if we're being bold enough. I am a taxpayer, and I know there's a lot of taxpayers that have concerns about this. But when you compare, if you really take a moment and compare the number of students in this district, it's been fifteen years since some of these schools, I mean, fifteen years, fifteen years since we've addressed these buildings on a large scale. And I'm amazed when I hear people in the community saying that this is too big, but we have districts that have eight hundred students, forty-three million dollars, twenty-six million dollars, and it's the second or third time in four years that they're going back to the folks, and we're afraid to go out and speak for our kids. There's no reason whatsoever in our community that any student of any race, of any socioeconomic level should be attending some of these schools in the capacity. Yeah, they need air conditioning. If there are schools in this community that have laptops for every child and air conditioning for every child, and they're required to take state tests, a requirement to take a state test, and some of our schools have students that are in line, waiting in line just simply to get access to the technology, to simply take a test, that then judges whether or not they're successful. It's absolutely ridiculous in our community that we're having this fight. We believe in every student, every student having the opportunity. We live in one of the richest communities of this entire country, dare I say, the whole world. We need to move forward. I appreciate the work that the board, I mean, I know you guys have been going back and forth at this, trying to do the right thing, and people, what if it doesn't happen? And I know you're taking this really seriously, so I just, as a parent, I appreciate the work that you're putting into it. Every one of these schools deserves the best opportunity possible. Every one of our kids deserves the best opportunity possible. And, and I just, you know, there's really no other comment outside of keep pressing forward. These buildings need a lot of work in every part of our district, every single part of the district. And some of them are just off the charts. When you see those pictures of fountains, our kids in some of these buildings don't have water fountains. Are we serious? Are we serious about this? That is a community that we would allow that to happen? That we would have furnaces that are so outdated and that we're really thinking about? Let's wait some years? So, I'm glad to see that you're focusing on technology. I'm glad to see that you're focusing on the bare essentials. But the last school board bond was two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, and everybody that looks at that bond knows it wasn't enough. They know it wasn't enough. And now, we're fifteen years later, fifteen years later, and it's okay for other districts to go for sixty and eighty and ninety million and have seven thousand students or eight hundred students, and nobody says a word. You have fifty-one thousand students in this district of every race, from every, just about every country in the world here, coming to OPS. You have some outstanding schools. You have parents that are ready to stand beside you, and I, I hope we press forward. You have parents that are ready to stand beside you, and I hope we press forward. I mean, I, I see my son, I see my daughter. I choose for them to go to Omaha Public Schools. I believe you've done a tremendous job of pushing at this point, but I encourage you to press forward. You're going to hear a lot of nonsense. You're going to hear a whole lot about why not to do it. But at the end of the day, we have kids sitting in open classrooms, 200 kids. Come on. That's ridiculous. We've got to move forward. We don't have the access to the technology that we need. We need, we need to move forward. And again, I thank you for the work that you're doing, and I do believe, again, that you need to tell your story. The schools where you have like demographics of other schools, you are doing extremely well. We need to press forward, accelerate the pace of progress, and I really appreciate the opportunity to address you, but keep pressing forward. I thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, do we have any more public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before you.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
So motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Underwood, motions by Mrs. Godding, second by Mrs. Underwood to approve this consent agenda. Any abstain, abstentions? I will be abstaining from H. H-13. Although it is not a conflict of interest, I have represented Lionsgate in a legal matter before. I am not their in-house counsel, but since we talked about transparency, I will abstain from that. Any other abstentions? Hearing none, roll call.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
9-9.
Motion carries. Moving on to information items. J-1A, federal nutrition, federal school nutrition community eligibility program. Sorry, Mrs. Toni Turkwist.
I think it's me.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne, and members of the board, Superintendent Evans, Tammy Arman is here to address this topic. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Evans and President Wayne. Tiffany did a wonderful job, again, of summarizing our meeting today, but I wanted to bring you up to date on some information that we've worked on since our last discussion. And just to kind of recap, the CEP program, the Community Eligibility Program, provides school districts with the option of not collecting meal applications at schools where a large number of directly certified students are located. Schools over 40% DC are eligible to participate, and last two weeks ago, we discussed the program benefits for our families and the district, and also programs and reports which needed further analysis and research. One of the points I want to make, and I know Tiffany discussed this earlier, is that we do have flexibility on the enrollment dates. It is not August 31st. The USDA, to encourage schools to move forward, has extended it into December. And so we can start the program anytime after that date. So I thought that was a good news story, rather than trying to rush through and come up with answers, because one of the things we found out in our meeting today, there's a lot of questions still unanswered, both from the Department of Ed as well as from the district. Since our last meeting, I looked at the data, which was dated April 1st, 2014. The Nebraska Department of Education, the data that they posted on the website was effective as in October, so it wasn't the most current data available. And one of the things I found out when we pushed all those numbers, we had to double-check to make sure we didn't double-count some kids, for example, the homeless, the migrants, Head Start in our DC. We did our household matches based on address. We found that over 80 sites would qualify for CEP, which means they're over 40%, and of those 80 schools, 24 of them would be over 100%, which means we would get 100% of the free reimbursement. As Tiffany said, we had a lively discussion this morning with the Nebraska Department of Education. In attendance was myself. We had research, IMS, purchasing, and Title I. We went well over our hour that we allotted, because there was a lot of questions and a lot of thoughtful interaction with everyone. One point was clear with the Nebraska Department of Education is that there was more research that needed to occur about the alternate reporting form, as far as the audibility and accuracy of which the Nebraska Department of Ed is going to check with some other states to see what they're doing there. Also, there was a concern raised about reporting date coordination, like with CEP, Title I, and the learning community. That also rose to the top, which would take some research. At the end of the meeting, it was obvious to all of us, we needed to continue the dialogue, especially with the Nebraska Department of Education as it relates to Title I and the required federal and state programs and reports. We appreciate the CEP application extension opportunity, because we definitely will need that time to really delve into it, especially with the Nebraska Department of Education. So we want to do what's best for our families in our district, and appreciate the opportunity to come forward and visit with you again tonight, and really appreciate Tiffany and her group and getting the meeting together today. To get everybody in the same room at the same time isn't always an easy task, but we were all there, and we were very active in the participation. Is there any questions I can help you with?
Any questions from board? Mr. Snow?
Thank you for meeting and presenting. I know this is last minute, but so what are the next steps from here?
The next steps with the Nebraska Department of Education is going to be, they were going to contact other states that use the Free and Reduced Data to find out what they have used for Title I. And if you have any questions about the Title I part of the CEP, I know Ms. Forte is here in the audience, that might be able to answer some of those questions for you. But that's where the majority of the questions arose, is the different reports and federal programs that use that Free and Reduced eligibility, as the Department of Ed had concerns about an alternative form, as to whether the accuracy and validity of the information. So.
So getting back information from other states and then coming back on?
Correct. Set up another meeting with the Nebraska Department of Education to see where we can go next, and then, you know, get some guidance from them.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
They're kind of our lead people at this point.
Mrs. Ray?
So I think there's probably a lot of reasons for doing this besides savings, financial savings to the district, but you had expressed some concerns about whether or not there would be financial savings, and I'm wondering if you could talk about that a little bit more.
Sure. One of the benefits of the CE program that's being really out there in the open is the reduction in paper. And when you move from a meal application to another form, as reporting of what we would need to do for all the other programs, you're really not eliminating a reduction in paper. It will still take somebody to analyze that information and compile that data for the other programs needed. And I think at this point, that's the option that's out there, is another reporting form. So when I visit about where the savings are, when you're just talking about that piece, there really isn't any, because you're just exchanging one form to the other. You know, there's other areas where you can save money, not related to the form. For example, if you're not collecting money, you won't have as much or as many deposit pickups. There won't be as many children paying cash, you know, when you're looking at deposit slips or, or my staff calculating, you know, balances. So there will be some efficiencies also, in the hope that when you feed all children, you will feed more children, so you have efficiencies in that way. But when you're talking just about that paper form and substituting one for the other, there really isn't any savings there.
That's helpful. Thank you for clarifying that. And so you're not concerned about that portion of the, like in the 80% schools, that that the district has to?
Well, part of the 80% schools, there is going to be that cash that we have to make up. If we don't do the schools that are 100% or more, then anything from, say, 70% to 100% will have to make up in cash for those paid meals. And I think if we, if, when, you know, when we look at this and move towards grouping, I think we can even get some schools that might even be at 100%. Like I mentioned two weeks ago, we have some schools that are 100%, some at 136, 24. Well, that extra percentage can be applied to other schools to get them to that 100%.
That's, that's important, I think, for the public to hear, and so I think that's a good explanation. Thank you.
Any other? Mrs. Underwood?
I just have a quick question, and I don't know if you have an exact number, but how many states have districts that are using this program? Like, does the NDE have quite a few states that they can go to as a reference?
Well, I know there was, I believe, six pilot states, and I know there's other districts and states utilizing the program. Our neighbors are over in Iowa. And then, of course, Detroit, and Chicago, and Ohio, and I think some school districts down in Florida. But I, I know that information is out there as to who, you know, has joined this year.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to, and I do want to say thanks for staff, for all the work and Voices with Children and other organizations who continue to work in partnership on this interesting and new task for the state of Nebraska. Moving on to J-1B, Facilities Master Plan Update on Stakeholder Engagement and Communication Services.
Board President, there we go, Board President Wayne, Superintendent Evans, who I think just had to take a break, other board members and district staff. We're here tonight to go over the new or the current recommended capital plan, talk about our next steps, and answer any questions. This essentially is the same plan that you all were presented last Thursday night. I think the number that everybody remembers is 421 million. It is the same dollar value. We believe this plan incorporates comments and input from the community, from the three community dialogue meetings that we had, with six steering committee meetings with over 25 people. It incorporates their input. We had several meetings with district staff, several work sessions, and of course, the work sessions with you all. The plan incorporates the comments that we've heard to date. It addresses the high priority deficiencies that we've identified. There are fire, life safety, and security, technology. It addresses the open plan schools, and it adds air conditioning to the elementary schools that don't have air conditioning. It improves the program delivery throughout the district by adding technology throughout, which gets you 21st century schools related to technology. It addresses community or career in tech ed, which is the renovation of Benson High School. It provides additional seats for early childhood education, and it relocates the alternative education programs. And last, it provides or addresses the needs of over-capacity schools and increased enrollment throughout the district. It is a two-phased plan, with the first phase addressing the fire, life, safety, security, and technology, those capital improvement items that are the most urgent, and procures land and does planning in preparation for capacity, increasing capacity, which would be then in the Phase Two plan. So the first category of Phase One is the fire, life, safety, security, and technology. It addresses or includes all of that at all of the elementary schools. It is all the capital improvement and renovation items deficiencies addressed at four of the open plan schools, those being Franklin, Jocelyn, Lothrup, and Sunny Slope. Again, it's all of the fire, life, safety, security, and technology at all middle schools and high schools, as well as the alternative. That's a total of 131 million. The second category in the Phase One are the capital improvement items at the elementary schools. That's including the replacement of Bell Ryan, Columbian, Western Hills, and Yates. It includes the capital improvement and renovations at those schools that don't have central air conditioning, which is Boyd, Crest Ridge, Dodd, Dodge, Florence, Gilder, Hartman, Indian Hills, Oak Valley, and Ponca. And then it also includes the additions that are at those, some of those schools, which will address some of the overcrowding at Boyd, Gilder, and Hartman. In the middle schools, it is the capital improvements at Beveridge, Bryan, Hale, and Norris, with additions at Beveridge and Norris. And then at the high schools, it's the capital improvements at Benson, Bryan, Burke, and Northwest. That includes the career tech ed at Benson, as well as relocation of the alternative programs. The third category in Phase One, to address capacity issues, is procuring land for two elementary schools in South Omaha, and then procuring land and doing conceptual design for a new high school in West Omaha and a new high school in South Omaha. Phase Two of the plan would then be for potential additional funding in hopefully 2017, 2018, as two categories of work. First category is the increase, to address the increased capacity or the capacity needs, building out those schools, the two site, two elementary schools in the south, one middle school in the south, one high school in the south, and one high school in the west. And then additional capital improvements at middle schools, nine more elementary schools, and then the remainder of the high schools. So overall, Phase One, as I said at the beginning, 421 million. That breaks down to 131 million in the fire, life, safety, security, and technology, capital improvements of 260, and land and planning for increased capacity of 30 million. The Phase Two is a total of 377 million, which is, capacity-wise, 173 million to address that, and then another 204 million to address capital improvement needs. The overall financial impact of the first phase, this information has been provided by the Omaha Public Schools General Finance and Administration Department, as well as Ameritas Investment Group. For the $421 million is an increase, a tax increase, of $60 per year on a $100,000 valuation. And this doesn't assume any other alternative funding. That is all 100% bond. So with that, our next steps as we finalize the plan, now we've had the same scope as last Thursday, 421 million. We are now preparing a document, you'll see samples of it, where this would provide the detailed scope of what's happening at each school by category, would also provide the overall cost impact and some general schedule information. And as you know, the end milestone date that you all have to meet is August 29th, to put it on the ballot. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Mrs. Underwood?
Just a quick question. I don't think you mentioned, maybe you didn't, I missed it. The detailed scope and schedule, when do you think that we'll have that?
Well, I think, committee, Jeremy and I are both working on this. We're looking at getting it out by the end of the week. So we've had a couple of drafts back and forth, and we just want to make sure that we have a lot of eyes on it and make sure there are no errors in it.
Mrs. Fay?
I know that on Thursday, I think it was Thursday, that we were all here, and people, everyone thanked you very much for the work that you put into this, but I want to point out again, just with the documents that you just referenced, with the scope, the timeline, that I believe I can see that every request that the board has made, you all have worked to meet and provide the requested information in a timely manner. Just tonight, members of the public referenced the atomized scope document, and, and so now, you know, we're hearing that that'll be forthcoming. And so I really want to applaud that effort that you have tried and succeeded in answering all of those questions and addressing concerns that have been brought to you by the board and the public. And so I thank you for that. And I also want the board and the public to know that just since Thursday and since the reporting that was done following Thursday's meeting, I have had literally a complete stranger come up to me and say, "That's a balanced, reasonable approach to this bond." And they appreciate the effort and the thoughtfulness and the work that went into coming out with a recommendation like this. It's responsible. And in addition to a total stranger at the ice cream store, I've also had lots of constituents who I do know, who have shown support and expressed their appreciation for the work that the board has done and the work that Jacobs has done and the recommendation that's come forward. It's not perfect, and it doesn't do everything for everybody, but it is, again, balanced and thoughtful and responsible. So I just want the board to know that that's been the response from the community to me.
Mrs. Scotty.
Tonight, and I do thank you for all the work you've done, and you've been great about answering my questions. And Jeremy has sat with me in many meetings to answer questions, and I appreciate that. Tonight, we heard from a number of parents who asked about the Burke Cafeteria. Would it be possible, when you give us the information, if you could tell us what it might cost to do the renovation for that, so we would have that information to make the decision?
We can include that.
I would appreciate that. Is the, I guess, sorry, the other question, the other comment that came up was that whole entrance and the safety issue. And Northwest is safe, it just doesn't have the kind of entrance that some of their schools have, where you can walk up to the front. Is that part of the detail? Is that in the 421? Yes?
We believe it is, because we do have dollars to address. We'll call equity issues. One of them is, as someone mentioned, the safe area. The other issue out at Northwest, I know we've got some other smaller areas within the building that functionally need help. So we do have some renovation dollars in there. We believe that looking at them as a whole, that they all could be addressed within that allocation for the renovation in Northwest.
Okay, that's great. And I appreciate that, because I think, from my constituent standpoint, they're waiting to get the detail and waiting to obviously see if we address some of the other issues, which are not related to things that you can do anything about today. And I understand that. So I appreciate it. If you can bring that back to us, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Scannell.
Could you come into a little bit more detail of what the scope will consist of? So I guess the public can be aware of it, the board can be aware. Are we going to have in the scope issues, or I guess, things that are spelled out that, yes, these are the things that will be happening in at Burke, the cafeteria, or the second storm shelter, or at Northwest, those types of things? How detailed will it be, and what can we expect that document to contain?
Since Jeremy has been working on it a lot, I'll let him go through it.
Yeah, so, Mrs. Scannell, what we've created is, and it's in draft form at the moment, but it'll basically, every school that's going to be, you know, a part of whatever referendum we go after, and it'll have the key items that are going to be addressed. So whether that's a part of the fire, life, safety, security, and technology, you'll see things like, you know, video intercom systems, card access readers, you know, interior door and harder replacements. So you'll see an identified list that'll show those key items that'll be addressed, along with a general description of the overall scope that'll take place. And then there'll be a dollar amount assigned to the school as well. So it'll be, it'll be a detailed look into each building.
Any other, Mrs. Scotty?
One of the other things that I think some of the folks who were here on Thursday, and we chatted with both Jeremy and Erin about, was the way that you all have planned for the new construction, whether it be West Omaha or South Omaha or the elementary schools, and just really thinking about that differently than maybe the way the district has thought about it in the past. And so, Jeremy, I know you were there. Can you just speak to the rest of the board and the public about that whole process and the being ready?
Oh, sure, sure.
For that next bond?
Right, so with any new facility that will be undertaken, so there's a, there's a series of things that need to happen before the building is ready to be utilized and occupied. So the first is, you know, a really intense planning phase. And one of the situations that we're in with particularly the two new high schools is that we don't have any land identified. So there's going to be some time in there where we're going to have to, and the district has actually already started, looking at potential areas that are suitable for a massive-sized high school. So the timeframe for that could be anywhere from, you know, six months to 10 months. It just depends on what's available and the timing. So that's the initial first phase of any, you know, type of massive undertaking for a facility. So once, you know, that process is completed, and, you know, it can coincide with the, the planning process. And that's when you get information from your community, information from stakeholders that, you know, are going to have involvement with that facility. So, you know, what's the school want it to look like? What do we want it to look like? Are there any special programs we want? Who's the principal going to be? So there's a number of things that need to be identified, you know, prior to getting a really good, sound design. So once some of those parameters are developed, which, you know, we could call a schematic design, then we would bring our architect onboard, once they're selected. And again, that's a process that can be done through interviews, community forums, to get input on what type of designer do we want, what's their experience, what's their background, to help us develop this design of the facility. So there's a whole design phase that goes on in there. And again, you're getting input from all your stakeholders. So once the design's completed, then we can move into more of the planning process for the actual construction of the building. So with that whole, those three main components there, I mean, that could be anywhere from, again, six months to, you know, two and a half, almost three years before we're, you know, even ready to start to build a facility. So there's a lot of front-end things that happen. And then once the construction starts, for the size of high school that we're looking at, which is about 1,500 students, you know, I think we're looking at about a two-year process for the actual construction of the building. And so, once the construction's done, then there's another phase that, you know, we call the move-in or the occupying. So there's furniture, there's fixtures, there's, you know, just all types of things that we need to have in place before we can actually start to utilize the school for the intended purpose. So it's, it's pretty intense, but again, you know, I know the district will take the same steps that they took in getting information on the current plan to, you know, help to define what that building would be and what it would look like.
Mrs. Williams.
Mrs. Gadding said something that I just really have to speak on. And it's not to negate the need of the Burke Cafeteria, but I just look at, if we're looking at, at this point, if we're looking at trying, how much does that cost? And is that going to fit into this bond? That just gives me pause to say, we're so close to a deadline. We're so close to making a decision. And I would hate for that, that one thing to hold us from moving forward, however we're going to move forward. But I, we should know what it's going to cost, but it also should be something that, is this something that, as a district, we can find district funds to be working with and to, you know, to alleviate this issue? And, you know, we haven't had, or let me, let me say this carefully. We have not, as of yet, to my knowledge, secured alternative funding. And that additional funding could also help to that specific Burke Cafeteria issue. I mean, but I just don't want us to get caught up in, okay, now we have to figure out where does this come from? And what does that look like? And, I mean, we've done so much work, and I would hate to get so close and for us to have to double the work in a shorter amount of time to figure out how does this fit in and where. And so I guess I'm asking the Superintendent and Dr. Poole, what does that look like to the district to figure that piece out? Because it isn't, it's, it's something that is needed. But is there an alternative way that we can figure that piece out so that we're not prolonging this process any longer than we've already prolonged it?
And there's a couple of things that I could talk about. The $421 million includes what we call a fully loaded estimate. That means that it's got all the soft costs included. So it includes inflation and escalation costs. It includes temporary housing when you have construction. And includes both project contingency and program contingency. So something like this, scope that you identify when you get to a project and you say, "We have to do it," you know, while it might not have been considered early on, while this was discussed, but we're going to get to other schools where, when we go out and validate scope, you're going to see things that, that have to be done with the scope. Those are, those are scope items that we discuss, and we evaluate and address and see if it can come out of the program contingency. So it doesn't bump up your total. It's how you're managing the overall budget and still delivering the entire scope that was committed. I also mentioned at Northwest, the reason I could answer the question on, "Does it have the front entry?" is we had had discussions and we had looked at the dollar that we have for that, that overall renovation, and said, "Can it address all of these different items?" We haven't necessarily done that with the renovation amount that's in the Burke budget right now. So in all likelihood, we can look at that, and the answer would be the same. It doesn't increase the overall total, but we need to make sure that we include it in the scope document so that when someone goes out to the school, they have their list, and they say, "We have to do these, these 20 items," that that cafeteria is looked at and it's addressed and it's discussed with staff. What are the needs? How much larger does it need to be? Not wanting to overbuild, wanting to make sure you address it. So we just need to look at the renovation item that's there, make sure that it could address all of the, the other issues out there as well.
And, and thank you for that, because that's, that's important. But, you know, I think my concern is more of, even if that happens, it's still an issue that it affects day-to-day, their, their day-to-day education and, and in the building. And so that's not something that, I mean, again, whatever that cost looks like, I think we need to be looking, as a district, of, okay, well, maybe we need to figure out this addition, these additional dollars or these additional funds to fix this issue. I mean, obviously, we're not going to be able to do everything everywhere. But I just don't want this same issue to, not this particular issue, but the same thing where it's, well, this thing was included, so maybe if we go and, you know, I just want to get to the point that we can say, okay, we've fit as much as we can and looked alternatively at some other things so we can move this process forward without more information and more time. Because time, we, time is of essence, and we are running out of time.
Mrs. Snow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I like Luanne's kind of suggestion with having that on that list, because it lets people see the full scope. We always are open to private people and people in the community, but allows people to see the real, actual item. So if something did change, you could add something in there. So I think it's upfront, and it's honest with people. And it's stuff that lets people that are in that attendance area wrap their head around how much it would cost for that. So, thank you.
Any other? Comments, suggestions? I just want to make a quick comment. Part of the reason we had the emergency workshop, in a sense, was we asked Jacobs to provide a phase-in option, and we thought it was critical that we have the meeting publicly as quickly as possible so the information can get out as quickly as possible, because we know we're on a short deadline when it comes to the end of August. And since then, I think we can't stop getting feedback at this point. And what I've heard tonight, from both my constituents over the weekend and also tonight, is that there's some immediate needs that need to be addressed at Northwest and Burke regarding capacity and some, and some other things. And so I guess where I'm at right now is, if that's the purpose of the meeting and the reason we had it on the agenda again tonight, and basically went through the same presentation, was to give the public the opportunity to digest this. The reason we're going to have another meeting, a special meeting, and take this item up is, again, to get feedback and give the public a chance to digest this. But the feedback I'm hearing is clear that those issues need to be addressed in this immediate bond. And I'm hearing that overwhelmingly. I haven't heard, at least from my constituents, that those shouldn't be addressed. And in fact, I got a lot of calls about kids not making it to class on time or trying to figure out how to do it the first couple of days, because the hallways at Burke just, quite honestly, weren't built for that many students to walk through that. The cafeteria is not. So I guess, to state it publicly, and I've said it multiple times about, if we're ever going to talk about having a west, a north-northwest high school, that Northwest has to be renovated. And I guess I'm at the same point now, from here and from my constituents, that if, if we're going to move forward on addressing our needs, I think the situation at Burke has to be a part of this too, in order to garner my support. That wasn't initially what we heard about Thursday, but that's the purpose of us, hearing from dialogue and hearing from public support. So I know Luanne kind of asked about pricing, where it's at. There are some current things that we might be able to do with funds, but I think at the next meeting, to garner my support, I think we have to address those issues. It doesn't change our number, but we may have to shift funds around inside of OPS's budget to make sure that we can address some of those issues. So I want to state that publicly. I think it's critical that we continue to get feedback and we continue to evolve until we make this decision of whether to go out and ask the public for a bond. Mr. Scannell, I knew that was going to spark some conversation. Mr. Scannell, followed by Mr. Vargas.
Do you guys have information at this meeting that you could provide that the capital improvements that we have at Benson, Bryan, Burke, and Northwest, the CTE renovation, that's 35 million? Could you address some of the renovations and capital improvements that would be of that 35 million? What would be going towards Burke? And what is currently planned for, for Burke specifically?
You know, I don't, I don't have the detailed sheets on each one of those with me. And what we would do is pull out the detailed information that we've been working on, really look at the scope at Burke, see if what we have in there can address and include this cafeteria. If not, we would offer up items that we think in, in that group that might be delayed for the Phase Two as opposed to the Phase One.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, President Wayne. Just in reaction to something you said, it just made me think about this. Yeah, I think in our efforts to ensure that the public is informed on this process and, and giving them the opportunity to digest the information, react to it, it is very encouraging to me that we have many parents and families coming to these meetings and, and sharing their perspectives and their opinions. I think for overall, for, for someone, from someone that, from a different district or sub-district, it's helpful for me to hear sort of the greater OPS, where all families and parents are. I think this is particularly important, that we're giving ourselves this more time, a little more time, we're trying to keep getting this out, that we're hearing from as many parents from, from all of the sub-districts that are not here. I think about South Omaha in particular, partly because I hear people call me, and I tell them, "I need to hear your voices more often, because I want to know how you feel about this second phase of this project, and on both ends of how it's impacting Greater Omaha, but also how it's impacting your, your, our community or your area." And I think that's important for all of our sub-districts to continue to get more of that, that voice coming out of this as we're engaging in this, because it can't just be led by what, what, how we're feeling about this. So thank you for those that are continuing to bring that out. And I'm hoping we hear a lot more, a lot more voices from different areas.
Any other comments, feedbacks? Mr. Scannell.
I guess, question, when is the next tentatively scheduled meeting for this?
We were having that conversation today. We are looking probably at a special board meeting on the 27th, 28th, or 29th, due to some people traveling from now until then. August 29th is the absolute deadline, August 20th, as the council's taking hand to.
Yeah.
So we will wait, because we may have... So we will wait because we may have, but that's the timeframe we were looking at regardless of the... All right. We have to file it on the 29th, which is why 29th is in my head. So we would be 27th or 28th. And Mr. Ray will be trying to coordinate that from, well, he's tried, we were talking about it today. So he'll be coordinating that. But understand, I guess, to your question, what I'm asking staff, and I think what I heard Luanne say too and Mr. Snow, is that we may or may not be able to do it, but let's explore both OPS's budget and what we think the scope is and present the option. And I think that's what people are asking. So, yes.
Well, I guess I'm just thinking of, you mentioned that the scope, a detailed scope would be available later this week, hopefully. How do we get that out to the public so they can review it and be able to come to that next meeting, the 27th, 28th, and have positive, or have feedback one way or the other that, you know, I mean, because that's the deadline. I mean, we're not going to have another meeting after that.
So what we previously discussed is once we get the final draft, obviously, it'll be sent out to the board, but we were looking at different ways of putting it out there, whether at schools or just various options. But our intent is planning on getting it out as soon as possible. And part of the reason, just so public knows, it's not a hide the ball thing. It's, we went from $1.1 billion to $683 million to we're phasing it in. So literally line by line, things were being, you know, moved to Phase Two or up to Phase One depending on what the board set for their priorities. So it'd be unfair for, to us to put Jacobs in a situation saying, "Put the $1.1 out and then come back and do another one, and come back and do another one." And actually, it would be very confusing to the public. So that's what we're trying to do.
I just want to make sure that we are communicating it to the public effectively because we've had some people that have said that they don't, they feel that it hasn't been presented in an open fashion, which I would disagree with. I think that throughout all the presentations we've had, schools listed, we've had what we're going to do as far as capital improvements, replacements, we haven't gotten down to line item, but I would say that we have been very open with listing the schools and saying that. So I just like to try to avoid that perception that we're not being as transparent as possible.
Understood. Ms. Williams.
I just, I'm still concerned with our timeline. I mean, and I, we've put in a lot of time. And I guess this is just to my board fellows that we need to get to the point that we're going to have all the information that we've digested. We know there's $1.1 billion worth of need. We know that we're not going to be able to get the $1.1 million worth of need fixed right now, but we also, I mean, I just hate for us to cut it down to the line and we're still, we come back yet again and then someone has a concern about a specific line item or something that we can, some of this stuff, it truly can be fixed or district funds utilized to amend some of these things, but I just hate for us to get to the same point again and then we have the same commentary and the same thing and now we're trying to push it back. It's, for me personally, I think that we're, we've done the work. We've had, it's been a lot of work. It's a long time that we've put in. We've listened to our constituents. We know what we need to do. We know what we want to do. Well, there's not a want, actually. It's all need. But it's trying to prioritize. And I just, again, my fear is that we're just going to keep pushing this and keep pushing it and then we're at the 29th and then we're going to be between a rock and a hard place. And I have to say, my conscience is, I have to say this publicly because I don't, there's need in every part of the district that isn't going to be addressed fully. And I don't, it's not fair to say that we're going to look at one versus another when we've done the work. And I think I'm a little, I can't, I won't say, but I just think that we've had the time to speak up and to say what we've needed to say. And I don't want to keep flip-flopping to say, "We need another, yet another meeting, oh, we need another meeting, we need another." At some point, we have to make a decision, one way or the other. But I think the longer we push this to the line and to the deadline, I think we're doing our students a disservice, we're doing our taxpayers a disservice, we're doing ourselves a disservice.
Any other comment? Moving on to J1C, Student Assignment Plan Update. Mrs. Galloway.
I think that tonight we clearly heard from a number of parents in my area and in Matt's area and in Justin's area that discussed a number of things that I think tie to the student assignment plan. And Mrs. Underwood's shaking her head, yes. And so I know she understands it too, which is the priority on neighborhood schools, the busing, some of the, clearly some of the overcrowding issues. And those are certainly the stories that I've heard in my sub-district as I've asked kids how it's been the first day of school. And it's been some unbelievable stories about, yeah, it's very crowded. Burke is very crowded. So unlike Mrs. Fay, I have yet to receive a positive email just because of some of the issues that the students in my area face. And yet, I very much appreciate the parents who came tonight to speak and to address us about some of these issues and to come up with really great ideas and suggestions for us to take a look at so that we can all move forward and so that we can be unified. And I think that we can change the trajectory of what's happening in the western part of the city if we take a look at those things. So I guess I would ask that if at all possible, we could have a student assignment meeting sometime before the 28th and maybe with district staff, and I know staff has changed a little bit, to discuss some of these items and to see where we can get to. Because similar to Mr. Wayne, my vote is contingent on how the needs of the folks in my sub-district can be met. And so I, but I know the needs that we have in this district and how we need to move forward. So I'm just asking if maybe we can come together as a committee and have some discussion that we've, that we've already had some of and maybe just have a little bit more.
Any, Mrs. Fay?
I want to be sure I understand, I'm not on the Student Assignment Plan Committee, but I want to be sure that I understand what you're asking the committee to do prior to the 28th. And are you asking them to come forward with some sort of recommendation so that the, what is on the bond in conjunction with this recommendation addresses some of the concerns? Are you asking them to come forward with some sort of recommendation regarding transportation or attendance areas or, because that's a really short timeline that won't allow for public input or?
Right. No, I'm not suggesting that we go and change things. I'm just suggesting that...
No, I didn't, I said a recommendation.
Yeah, nor a recommendation from where we've, you know, been at. I'm just wondering if it would, I think I would have more confidence if I could hear from the Student Assignment Plan Committee and some of the district staff as to what we've already talked about related to busing and what we've already talked about related to the attendance areas and Area C. And to see, you know, if district staff or if the other committee members on the Student Assignment Plan have any other suggestions so that I can feel comfortable in knowing where we might be headed to give a recommendation to the full board or just have the confidence that I can get to where I need to be.
So I guess my concern about that is that you would be making your decision, you just said your vote would be contingent on your comfort level with all of that, and you would be basing your vote or your decision on something that hadn't been fully vetted by the public or discussed in public by the full board. And so that, that concerns me.
Right. And I don't, I don't mean that we should be changing anything or that the full board shouldn't have the conversation and that the public wouldn't have that conversation. I'm just trying to understand, is it even possible to talk about some of the things that were asked tonight? And if not, you know, then that's a different, a different point.
Ms. Williams.
So I get where Luanne's coming from as far as the information piece, but considering that we've kind of pushed that student assignment plan out for the following year, 16, 17, am I correct? I think where we are right now is we should be meeting again regularly, but I think the context of, I think what you're saying is to start looking at some of the requests that we're hearing and looking at it, but I just, I don't see how it coincides with where we are, you know, as far as making a vote for a potential bond or not. But I do get what you're saying, that it will help you amongst your constituents to look at some of the things, well, what happens if this? But I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure if where we are right now is going to help facilitate that enough as of yet. I mean, because we do have a lot of work to do. But you bring up a great point is that we need to, now that we've taken some time to dive into this facility study, it's time for us to now shift gears and to dive back into the student assignment plan so that we can look at, what does that look like in two years? What does that look like in four years? What does that look like when new high schools are built? What does that look like when? But I don't know if that right now breeds life into the facility study.
Any other comments before, Mrs. Underwood?
I just want to say I'm willing to meet on the Student Assignment Plan Subcommittee whenever. I think that we need to start having that conversation again very soon. I heard at one point that we'd start meeting again, maybe at the end of August anyway. So I am in agreeant, I'm in agreement with Marin and Yolanda when they said that, you know, this is a piece that we need to start looking at in the student assignment plan, but we can't necessarily come back and, and, yeah. Luanne, I think, recognizes that as well. We can't come back with a recommendation and have a full board discussion when we haven't fully gone out to the public. So I'll, just to reiterate, I'm fine meeting on the Student Assignment Plan Subcommittee whenever.
Any other, Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since I sit on the Student Assignment Plan Committee, I would be interested in meeting before then for the discussion of it. I think right now, though, we're at a crunch time for a window. We don't want to put too much stuff in there and confuse the voters. I think that's why we pushed back that student assignment plan, so we can kind of separate them. But it will be interesting to get with the district and hear some of the information and facts about it.
Ms. Williams.
I just, this is really for the public, but I am excited to get that public input. And there's a lot of parents here today that your input is going to be requested and we want that input because that makes a difference. But right now, we have to set it up across the district and, you know, we do need to start meeting again. I'm very excited myself to kind of get out there and have this conversation and talk with parents because I think we're going to be putting in the same amount of work on the student assignment plan that we did on the facility study because it's equally as important. So I'm just requesting to our public and to our taxpayers and constituents to, when those opportunities arise, please stand up and be heard because we need your input. We need your feedback. And I know that the research department is just waiting to get their hands on some data.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to jump in and say, I think the last year's events, and we've been, as a board, thinking long-term. We've, we've put a strategic plan together and I remember Mr. Vargas talking over and over about part of this is getting the data so that maybe in years where some schools are not hitting the marks that they need to hit and there's opportunities for improvement, that we can dedicate resources to those five schools to make sure they catch up. I look at this as no different, that we spent a long time looking long-term. We've had three different models put out. But for whatever reason, we haven't addressed the short-term needs. And I'm thinking specifically of Benson, Northwest, and Burke. Benson last year was almost a Class B school in sports. And this board and Mr. Evans and staff went down there and asked for relief. And I think many in the Benson District, at least the alumni who I've talked to regularly about that, were hoping that we were going to come up with a short-term solution to help address that issue. At Northwest, we've talked about it since I was in school, about the number of people leaving the attendance zone area and going to other schools. And we can say it's a marketing issue, but part of building credibility is addressing some of the short-term needs that we need right now in our district. And I think what I heard tonight and what I've heard over the last four years regarding Burke is how are we going to address it actually exploding from the number of kids over the next two to three years? This issue wouldn't have gone away even if we built a new high school to, in the seven-year or five-year plan that Mr. Cobb's talked about. There still has to be an immediate solution to these issues. And I'm thinking of those particular schools. And I would throw South and Bryan in that too. And now I'm thinking about the numbers. And I think what we're hearing is as we move forward with any potential bond and addressing our needs, there's a long-term vision and there's a short-term vision. And what we're hearing from constituents and our parents is, what are your short-term solutions? It's like, you know, we can't see the forest because we're looking at one tree or we can't see the tree because we're looking at the forest, whichever way it is. I'm tired, I forgot the exact quote, but we all know what I'm talking about, is that we got to be able to see both perspectives. And so while the high, new high school or potential new high school will address it over the next 10 years, we have concerns for family members today. And this wasn't just Luanne who asked for this to be on here. There were other board members who just said, "What are we going to do with the immediate short-term needs?" And that's why this is being talked about publicly, is because I think those have to be addressed. Not saying we come back with the plan in two weeks, not saying we come up with the plan in a week, but I think it's something that our community is looking for us to address, not this year, but definitely next year. And I think a big student assignment plan is going to take multiple years to implement. But if we carve out some of these schools, and it's not just high schools, we got some problems with elementary schools as far as attendance zones and those things, how do we deal with those on a short-term solution? To one, continue to build credibility with our voters, continue to build better credibility with our parents that we're addressing their current needs. It's easy for us to sit up here and we take the high-level approach, where's the district going to be 10 years from now? But as a father of a daughter who's three, soon to turn three, I'm thinking, where is that school going to be in two years? Where's that school going to be at tomorrow? And we have to at least explore the option. And I think that's what I'm hearing. And I would like the committee to look at that and whenever they get back to us. I just think that needs to be pressed, particularly for those schools that I've seen publicly stated, but if the committee finds other schools, how do we deal with those short-term needs? Any other comments?
Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess from my perspective, and every year, you're always impacted when you physically walk into those schools and see all the young faces and see all the smiling young faces, by the way, and the smiling staff, even the ones that are in schools that we know have some pretty, pretty really extreme needs. I think Willie Barney hit the nail on the head. They're not angry, which I'm always surprised because I kind of think, "I might be angry if I was in this setting." But they're not. And they're not because they have faith and belief in this board, faith and belief in this community, and faith and belief that we're moving in the right direction. In regards to the student assignment plan, I guess, having seen all of those crowded hallways... hallways in, in multiple settings, and you're right, it's not just one setting, it's multiple settings, there may be a need to kind of have a short-term, long-term on student assignment plan. I really hadn't thought that, because you guys have already invested, you know, literally hundreds of hours on that, and staff has as well. But there may be some, there may be some logic to that, is now we're getting closer to understanding facilities. What are some of the things that are critical today? And I don't know that I know any answers or anything, but I, I believe there may be some, some items that can be handled in the short-term while we're looking at the long-term picture on that. You look at the growth, and I, I think at the end of the day, we're going to have more than 1,000 new students this year on, on top of the 51,000. So unless I'm really, I've only been to 20 schools so far, and I'm going to hit some more tomorrow too, but they're either the same or more. I'm not finding any that are down in enrollment in all 20, and some are a lot more. Monroe Middle School was 508 last year, today it sits at over 600, 100 more students. That's just one school, but that kind of tells you a story. So I think that may have some impacts that you didn't know. I mean, we didn't know, you never know what the next year's membership's going to look like. Now, we're going to know that number in the next few weeks, and I think that data will be good data for our student assignment plan to have and say, this looks like what I thought it would, this looks different than what I thought it would. So I think you're going to have some new data that may give you some other, some other information to help you make some decisions, long and short-term, so. But, but I do appreciate all the hours you've put in, so please don't take this as throwing those things out. You've already spent tons of time on that, and I recognize that. Thank you.
I guess I just want to make a clarification, because we're looking at a, a couple of years out. So what is, what is your definition of short-term? Because I think the thing that we all recognize on the committee is that we don't want to just make some changes just right now, just for the here and now, and then we're going to have to turn around in another year, make changes yet again. I think we're looking at, how do we make changes? We're looking at the next school year, and we also have to recog, you know, recognizing grandfathering and all of those complex issues. And I think if we start saying, okay, there's just, there's these 10 schools that we really need to look at their assignment plan right now, well, I think it's, again, it's one of those disservice pieces, is that if we're going to do it, then I know that the committee members are committed to meeting more, if that's what it takes to get this, get the job done. But I would rather make sure that we have a plan that's sufficient and that takes care of all needs, and not just looking at the few schools, because it's not just a few schools. The whole district has sent the same issues. I don't care what part of town you are in, there's overcrowding, there's, there's not overcrowding, there's some grade levels are higher in capacity, there's some not. So I, I just, we're here to do the job to service all of our students, and we want to get it done sooner than later. But I think having some of those additional requests is going to hinder the process if we can look at our district as a whole, and what makes the best sense. Looking at Burke, looking at, you know, a potential, the, the new schools, and, and how does that, I mean, we have to plan for not just one year. We have to plan for, okay, when this building is ready, where does this go? And in the meantime, how do we start flowing into some of those schools that are lower in capacity than others? So I will speak for myself on the committee, I'm willing to put in the extra time and the hours to solve the problem as a whole, but I just don't see that it's feasible to focus on just a few when we need to fix the whole.
The question, short-term and long-term, that's exactly what I think we're, what, that is what we're asking, because the, the new middle school, if this board adopts Phase One and Phase Two, may or may not happen. So we're still going to have to have a short-term solution from tomorrow until five years from now. So I guess how Luann, or Mrs. Gotti, or Mr. Snow, or anybody else wants to jump in, is I see a, a two-year plan, or a two-year plan, I guess, is the only other way to say it, for, to address some of those immediate needs. When, when students have to carry a bookbag the whole day because they can't get from their locker room to their, their locker to a classroom, we have some schools that are starting lunch very, very early. I, I think those are things within OPS we should be able to address in the short-term, and then continue to look out in the long-term of how we address it when there's a new school, if there's a new school. But if, if we don't address them now, and let's say there isn't a new high school, then we never addressed the problem. So at least we have a contingency plan of what we're doing now in the short-term in case there isn't a new high school, in case there isn't a new middle school, in case there isn't a new, two new elementary schools. I mean, I think there's a short-term and a long-term, and we're just asking the committee to explore it, and could come back and say, just can't do it because of the grandfathering issues, because of the cost of, of running smaller bus routes, the, for a variety of reasons, they may not be able to. I think what we're, what at least I'm suggesting or asking is for, in the short-term, over the next two to three years, can we have a short-term plan and a long-term plan? Mrs. Gotti.
And, and I think I was, I mean, that's where I'm headed, is clearly we have some real need, and we know that if Burke and Northwest are full of just Burke and Northwest students, we're still 2,000 seats short. And today, we don't have a short-term solution for that, nor have we addressed, how do we fill out Burke and Northwest with students from the area instead of sending them across the border to another district where they'll happily receive our students? So we also need to look at South and Bryan when we're happily sending 700 students across the border there. And so I, or we're not happily doing it, they're happily receiving our students. So I guess in my mind, we have a solution that we have to come up with for the next five years that addresses specifically those high school needs at those four schools where we have too many students in the attendance area that we don't have a, a seat for. And in the long-term, that may look completely different, but until those two new schools are built, we have, we have some real issues that have, have started to come forward. So I just want to make sure that we think about that, and that we're open to some of the suggestions that were brought forth tonight, so that we can retain students, because it is really hard to watch our kids' friends leave all the time. And it is really hard to know that, I'm going to get calls about how crowded the hallways are. So those are just some of the things that I would like to see us have a conversation about, so that we can move forward. And then in five years, we'll be retaining the students and be able to open and have parents feel confident about where we're at.
Ms. Williams.
So I guess what I'm hearing then is that as a committee, we should be looking at a two, two-phase to mimic where we are, because I'm not going to say if, I'm going to say when we get a new middle school, when we get the new high schools, and when we get the new elementary schools. I think if, I, I just come from, if you, if you speak it into existence, then it's going to happen. So I, I, there's no, for me, there's no other option, we're going to get those schools. So we need to look at, what can we do for 1617, trying to remember the right year? And then what does it look like in the years that new schools come on board, and how does that look when those schools come on board? I think, I mean, I, I just think we should be modeling where we are. We are having, we are, short-term, we are going to have something in the next two years to facilitate those needs, and possibly earlier. I mean, it, it just depends on what we, the time that we put into it, but I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I think if we look at where we are right now, and then when we get those new schools that come on board, let's look at, how do we facilitate the student assignment plan with those new schools coming on board, so that everyone has a plan that's solid and concrete.
Ms. America.
First off, I want to agree with Ms. Williams, that we do need to be saying when we have the new high schools and the new middle schools, because it's not an if issue, it's a when issue, because regardless, if for some reason, the voters of Omaha don't approve a bond issue, we're still going to need those schools down the line. And we, as a district, will have to go back at some point and say, you know, yes, you didn't do it that time, but we still have the kids, we still need these schools. So we do need to be saying when. My other question, I, maybe I'm confused, but we had a workshop on July 21st where the student assignment plan committee presented some different model options that they were looking at. I know, I got some public feedback from people who got on the website and looked at that. And as, I was under the assumption, I just like to make sure that I was understanding correctly, that those were based on our current schools in existence, that those models or plans weren't developed thinking about the future high schools. And so I guess I need to back up a couple steps. I just want to make sure those plans were based on those, and then my understanding was that we would, obviously, if we added additional schools, be going back to make different, make changes based on that.
Mrs. Faye.
Do you want someone to answer Lacy's question first?
Mrs. Underwood.
Yeah, so yeah, to answer your question, and please, anyone else on the subcommittee, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I remember it is, it was based on our current high schools. And honestly, we didn't really have a discussion about future high schools, just because we kind of stopped that conversation and then moved on to facilities options. So yeah, we, I think now that the student assignment plan committee starts meeting again, we should definitely take that into consideration, whether it's a phased approach or otherwise.
Mrs. Faye.
So something that Mrs. Williams just said about getting ahead of ourselves is really resonating with me, because I, I don't, while I think that looking at a student assignment plan is one part of addressing capacity issues at some of our schools, it's not the only thing. And so I caution us from not addressing those capacity issues and address, and when I say capacity issues, I don't mean, just mean the schools that are over-capacity, but all the schools that are under-capacity as well, from a really strategic place, and that's going back and saying, okay, it's going to be the student assignment plan, but it's also leadership. We've got this whole process just started with the executive, I think they're still here, the executive directors that are helping us address it from a leadership perspective. It's the strategies that are outlined in our strategic plan that we're employing, and seeing how that raises test scores and, and builds the kind of safe and environment where students can learn, and where parents are engaged, and where there's communication. I mean, there's a lot of facets to addressing the issues that some of the parents brought up tonight, because they weren't all about overcrowding, that we heard of things about, but we heard over and over again from almost every parent about perception and telling our own story. There's a lot of things that need to be addressed, and student assignment plan is just one of them. And so whether it's short-term, long-term, I mean, I trust the committee to discuss all that and digest it, but to look at it in, in the whole, and how it's one part of addressing all of these issues. And so I don't, as Mrs. Williams said, want to get ahead of ourselves, and want to rush into anything, and want to jeopardize the work, because, and, and I use that word intentionally, jeopardize the work that we've done to get to this point with the facilities issue and, and potential support by the board for placing something on the ballot to address those facilities needs by getting things tangled up in, in another layer of, I mean, it's obviously important, and we wouldn't have spent the last 45 minutes discussing student assignment. I don't want to get things too tangled up, and I don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction to addressing capacity with a student assignment plan when I think it needs to be done from a much more strategic and thoughtful place.
I, I agree that we're looking at more than just one aspect of, of retaining kids, which, by the way, this board signed off on as one of the strategic goals that Mr. Evans has to live up to over the next three years, every year, for the next three years. So I just want to point that out, that we said that that was important, and I think as we do the things at Northwest, there's new principal there, we have new positions to help support those principals, there's a, there's a physical structure that also needs to take place, and there probably is a student assignment plan that also be, needs to take place. And I think all we're asking is that the committee look at that and move forward. Moving on to K1, action item, policy review.
President Wayne, members of the board, before you again this evening, our policies 8130, respectively, as you can see on the screen, through 9370. I am going to just walk you through just those four policies that we discussed last time. So if you would like to click on 8347, again, that's 8347, on that agenda, you've got basically that policy there, and the only change that we made to that policy as you pull up, used to say the word "expect," and now it says "accept." So that policy has been changed there as requested last time. Next, a policy in chronological order that I'll have you pull, pull up, is 9127, again, that's 9127. So this policy was discussed in length the last board meeting, and we've made several changes to it. Under B, we have struck the words utilizing through the word education, so utilizing a request for information form which will be promulgated by administration, maintained by board offices, by the director, Director's Secretary to the Board of Education, that's all removed. Instead, it says, "Request for information will be made through the Secretary to the Board of Education and forwarded to the board officers. Each request for information made by an individual board member will be forwarded to all board members for their information, as well as a copy of all information provided by administration pursuant to the request." The time limit has been struck also from that language in 9127 in B. Then let's move on to heading C. "When school, visiting school sites, individual, individual board members are expected to report to the principal's office to notify staff they are in the building or on school grounds." Sorry, that just kind of sounded a little funny as I was, like, like I'm, as I was reading that. So that's how it's currently written. Under 9320, bylaws to the Board of Education, we have added the word, if you pull that policy up, we've added the word "roll call," and then after roll call, excused and unexcused absence. So that's been added there. Since that's a normal practice that we do, we wanted to make sure, include it in our general, regular order of business. And then finally, under 9341, again, that's 9341, if you click on that, the only little change that's been made there is under A, instead of the word "noes," it's "nays." So that is the policies in front of you this evening. Do you have any questions that I could help you answer?
I entertain a motion to approve the recommended policy changes.
Still moved.
Second.
There's a motion to approve recommended policy changes. 8130, 8230, 8232, 8240, 8260, 8270, 8271, 8272, 8273, 8320, 8330, 8340, 8341, 8342, 8343, 8344, 8345, 8347, 9,000, 9,010, 9,100, 9,110, 9,120, 9,121, 9,122, 9,123, 9,124, 9,126, 9,127, 9,140, 9,201, 9,210, 9,220, 9,301, 9,310, 9,320, 9,330, 9,340, 9,350, 9,360, 9,370. Any discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
It's eight I and one absent.
Motion carries. If the board is willing, I'll entertain a motion to waive second reading on the policy that we just passed. If no one makes a motion in the next 10 seconds, we will move to the next. Mrs. Faye?
I move to waive second reading, but only if you have to read all those policy numbers again.
Which I, which I will. There's a motion to waive second reading by Mrs. Faye. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to waive second reading by Mrs. Faye, second by Ms. Williams, to waive second reading of policy 8130, 8230, 8232, 8240. Are these all listed on the agenda in E-meetings?
Correct.
Move the waive second reading as listed on E-meetings' agenda that is before us. Any discussion? Mr. Scanlon?
I would just throw out again that, you know, I think this is an opportunity for us not to waive second readings here. I know there's a lot of minor changes, but it's always nice to be able to have that public review and public comment. Give them two weeks to come back and make any suggestions that they might have, just to make sure we're listening to the public.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Faye?
Only that they were presented last week, and so they're being presented again this week. And I, two weeks ago, yes, they were presented two weeks ago. And I do know that we need to get moving on these policy changes. So, although I completely respect Mr. Scanlon's position, and I just want to point out that they were published two weeks ago and have been available to the public since that time.
Any other discussion? Hearing non-rule call. This does require a two-thirds vote.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Faye?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
No.
Snow. Seven I.
Motion carries. Moving on to request for closed session.
Whoops, sorry. I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and legal counsel pending litigation.
There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Gotti to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gotti, Mrs. Gotti, second by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Rule call.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Faye?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow.
Underwood?
Aye.
It's eight I.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board, the purpose of closed session is for the protection of public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to reputations of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary of the Board, and legal counsel pending litigation. Contract negotiations.